No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Mr. Rubens, we have a report from closed session.
Yeah, as I reported earlier in the, after the, during the closed session at the special meeting, the city council has decided, excuse me, the RDA board has decided to commence an appeal of the recent decision brought by the Sequoia Union High School District, the San Mateo County Community College District, and the San Carlos Elementary School District against the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. The, as the public knows, the city, excuse me, I keep saying that, the RDA had an adverse judgment against it on December 15th, 2011, and so that's the decision that the RDA Board decided to appeal, and the voting tally on that action was three, zero, one. One person not present, three council members voting in favor of the appeal, and one abstaining. The three voting in favor were Mayor Klein, Councilmember Gercilli, and Councilmember Collins, and the abstention was Councilmember Olbert.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rubens. We will go to item number four.
May I just enlarge upon my, the reason for my abstaining?
Um, Mr. Rubens, are we okay with that? Yeah.
That's appropriate.
Yeah. In this particular situation, having switched from the plaintiff's to the defendant's side of the table, for reasons that Greg Rubens can explain better than I can, if you wish to learn about them, the best thing to do is, I participate in the discussions, but I took no role in the actual decision, which is why I abstained. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move to item number four, council communications and announcements. We'll start with you, Mr. Olbert.
Uh, no, none at this time.
Mr. Gercilli?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Nothing.
Okay, well, I'm the only one. Since we are now actually officially into my term as mayor, one of the things I'm going to change, we are going to reinstitute mayor office hours. Also, it'll be opportunity for the public to drop by without any appointment and come and talk to someone on the city council. I will be getting the hours that I will be open for business. For those of you who haven't seen, we have a mayor's office again. It's right around the corner. If you head towards the police department, it's the old mayor's office from about 10 years ago. It was the IT department for a while. So, Mr. Moore and I will work on an e-notify, and we will put those up on the website, and if you have any issues or any things you would like to discuss, feel free to come on by, and I will have coffee and other refreshments, which I imagine I'll mostly eat by myself. So, moving on then to item number five A, council appointments and presentations. Do we have a staff report for this, Mr. Moore, or Mr. Moppy, or do we just handle this one on our own?
Typically, you just handle this one on your own, but if you need any help, I'll be happy to jump in.
No, you don't. But I'm just going to make one correction. We have the advanced life supports. It says it's appointed by the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Authority, as that no longer exists. It's just appointed by the San Carlos City Council. Do we have any questions about the list? Seeing none. The only thing I'd like to add is, in the past, the city council used to agendize reports from each of the representatives on these committees. So, once a month, we'll have a list of the committees. We go on, and we'll just go down the line, and if people have reports to give, they will, and if they don't or haven't met yet, they can just make that known as well, so we can have a greater discussion about what's going on in all these committees. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gercilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott is absent. Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item six, public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. We only have one public comments slip, and that's from Andre Carpio. Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I'm habitual complain about the theft of my solar car. I see here we have two new city councils, Mr. Collins and Mr. Olbert, and one of you two is a property owner, Mr. Collins, I guess. And one of the question that has always been forgotten, overlooked about the property of the theft of my solar car is the property. And as the owner of a property, you can read the liability. In other words, if anything happened, you liable to pay. Not the manager, not the tenant, nothing. Anything that happened on the premise in which you have control, you have to pay. This is something that has not been taken into consideration in a theft of my solar car. My solar car was given to someone who is not the owner, who is not on the title, and under manufacturer, and so it's a grand theft auto, aiding and abetting, and the city council is responsible for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carpio. Are there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to item number seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items seven A through E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gercilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
I'll vote yes, except on items B and C where I abstain because I was not present.
So noted. Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item eight. There are no reports to council, so we'll move right on to item nine A, public hearing. Consideration of adopting a resolution of the city council declaring an underground utility district for portions of the old county road. Mr. Savay?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of tonight's recommendation on the East Side Connect project is only to ask the council to establish a boundary map for the underground utility district. The map will set the boundaries for the extent of undergrounding the overhead utility lines for PG&E, and we won't be able to continue the project unless we do establish this boundary map, as PG&E will not allow us to submit an application for the design work for the undergrounding of the utilities unless we have a boundary map established by the city council. In terms of this presentation, we'll provide you with an overview of the project. We'll review the design plans. We'll talk about the undergrounding district boundaries and funding, and also next steps. And following my introductory remarks, I'll ask Brian Fletcher to, our project manager with Calendar and Associates, to get up and complete the presentation, and of course, we're available to answer any questions. We've presented this project to the council on a number of different occasions in the past. For instance, that acceptance of the MTC application grant, awarding of the contract to Calendar and Associates. We've requested council guidance on the design of the plan, and then tonight, we're bringing it before you for establishment of the boundaries. And you'll note in the staff report that we've provided cost estimates for a couple, the two main components of the project. One is the component for the undergrounding, and then the other component is the, is the MTC grant for the design. So, there's Rule 28 funding, which is provided by PG&E, and then the MTC funding from the grant and other funding sources would fund the design. As of writing the staff report, in the staff report, you'll note that we said on the design side, we have a deficit of about $600,000. We're over budget by about $600,000. And we continue to value engineer the project, and just in the last week or so, we eliminated about another $100,000. And so, we're going through line by line, trying to value engineer the project. The main reason for this cost overrun is when we first submitted our plan to the MTC for the grant application, it was just an application. It was, it was the basic ideas that we had about the project. We then went to the community, and following the receipt of the grant, we went back out to the East Side community and had a number of community meetings. And what we heard is that, and through extensive community input, is that there's a number of things that the East Side community is interested and is asking for as part of this project, and they include things like better and higher visibility pedestrian crossings, traffic, circulation, and safety improvements, and high-quality lighting and landscape design standards. So, they support these things, and so we're going to, we're trying to see if we can continue to have these, these extras and high standards in this project and value engineer it. And we will bring this project back to you after this meeting. We'll bring it back to you at the bid document stage. So, once we get the project ready, we'll be ready to go out to bid to get the, get the undergrounding done and do the design at the, in late 2012, beginning of 2013. And at that time, we'll bring you the cost estimates back. We'll bring the whole project back to see if you're going to let us go out and, and bid it. But before we bring it back to you, what we'd like to do is bring it back to the East Side community and talk to them about some of the priorities and some of the, perhaps, some of the trade-offs with regard to the high level of design that we have in this, in the, in the project so far. And we're going to, we're going to try and drill down on the design costs as far as we can get before we do that, but we do want to get some more input from the East Side community before we bring it back to you. And with that, I'm going to hand the project and presentation over to Brian Fletcher.
Oh, okay. Mr. Fletcher, how long is your presentation?
I will keep it down to under 10 minutes, I promise.
Okay.
As this has passed a couple of times. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Appreciate it. I won't go through the schedule. Al did a great job of that. This is the, I'm pleased to present the next portion, the next application, the next approval that's necessary to keep this project moving. To give mainly those new council members a little bit of brief overview, the project is essentially all of Old County Road from Belmont down to, down to Redwood City, as well as East San Carlos Avenue. I've split it up into two different colors, in blue and in green. The undergrounding that we're talking about tonight is happening only in the green. That's where the, where the undergrounding and the majority of sidewalk and streetscape and enhancements happen. The remainder of the blue areas generally are traffic lane striping and some, and street resurfacing. In general, we're taking sidewalks that range from four to five feet with lots of utility line obstructions, to having eight-foot sidewalks free of obstructions, keeping parallel parking, and then having shared travel lanes, which are for bicyclists and vehicles at the same time. As we move to the Caltrain station, these are just highlights of the project itself. We're dramatically, and I think through the community input, really made a better plan to dramatically improve pedestrian safety around, around the Caltrain station by moving the taxi stand to the opposite side of the tracks to recapture this space for pedestrian use, and to make these crossings safer for pedestrians, to encourage existing and future workers to use East San Carlos both for pedestrian and bicycle use. In this area, in the commercial area, we are continuing the eight-foot sidewalk and parking. In this case, we have parking on both sides with the shared lanes in the middle. We are also making improvements down to Commercial Street. This was a highly-used undercrossing that goes to Aurora Street on, on the opposite side. The tracks are down here, Caltrain tracks. So, we're making improvements here, making it both safer for pedestrians to cross at the intersection, as well as for bicyclists in the area to make a left turn onto that, onto that underpass and over to El Camino. We're also making improvements to East San Carlos Avenue and providing, completing the sidewalk. There's a number of segments that don't have sidewalk on the southern portion, and we are completing the sidewalk there, as well as creating a bike boulevard. Because of the light vehicular traffic, we see a real opportunity to encourage bicyclists to use this, to make connections down to Redwood Shores and future improvements on industrial. So, you're here tonight to approve the utility district map. That allows us to do the next step with PG&E and to make an application for design within the undergrounding district, and that's the map that you see in your council package tonight. The location, this just gives some details. Typically, the trench is going to be in the street. We've got a myriad of utilities within the street, so we're trying to funnel this joint trench through wherever we can. However, the boxes and such are going to be on the sidewalk. There are going to be a number of panel conversions, relatively light for this project, but that's changing private panel from overhead serve to underground serve. To give you just a picture of what these look like, look like north of Holly Street, you can see the utility lines in the residential district. Those are all going to be coming down, and you're going to have eight-foot sidewalks clear of obstructions. In the commercial zones, you can see the utility lines again, and you can see the feeder lines through some of these businesses that are going to have to be converted. The funding for the undergrounding is coming from PG&E's Rule 28 funds. Our estimates right now, which include contingencies, and that's one thing I want to point out in Al's discussion of, of the $600,000 overage, that also includes a 5% contingency that we typically remove before we go out to bid, because we have another 10% on board. So, we're fully confident that we're going to work on a solution on, on that portion. The city currently has a balance of just over $1 million in credits. You can borrow up to five years of credits for a total of 1.7. And funding for the design portion, and John Beebe from AEC, Electrical Engineers, are on our team, is here for questions about some of that design work. The funding for the streetscape improvements, other than the undergrounding, is going to come from other sources, like Al said, MTC, TDA funds for bikeway improvements, as well as your CIP funds for roadway resurfacing. So, with that, I'll, well, the schedule gives you the brief overview. I think Al's already gone through this. We're looking to send this project out to bid come fall of this year. So, this has been a great process. PG&E has been supportive, and they're going to be working to meet some of those schedules as well. So, with that, I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Want to take questions from council? Mr. Collins?
Uh, thank you.
Mr. Savay or Mr. Fletcher, who wants to answer questions?
Uh...
We're going to need one of you up here to answer questions. Okay.
I have one question to begin with, but I'll probably, I may have some more later. I didn't see a timeline. I know it's going to start. You, you have it starting winter of 2013. How long do you anticipate the project will take?
It's generally about a year.
Okay. And will you keep some of the street open at the time?
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't have the, the final staging plans aren't complete just yet, but we will keep the road open. Probably one side will be closed off at any one time as we move from block to block through construction. But to facilitate the eight-foot sidewalk, we are going to have to make some resurfacing, some changes to the grade of the roadway, which will necessitate grinding down a couple of inches on the roadway. So, we're going to have to shut down a lane at a time and have probably just flagmen out there because of the light traffic on there to keep one lane open at any one time, and the flagmen to direct traffic through there.
And what are the work hours?
Work hours would follow city standard work hours, which, you know, I believe are, what, eight to five?
Okay. That's it for now.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Actually, I think my main interest is probably in understanding where we are and the value engineering work being done, but that's not actually what we're up for deciding here tonight, so I don't have any questions about the utility.
Mr. Gercilli?
I have no questions.
I have no questions either. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. We're going to open up the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public which to comment. Okay, we're seeing, oh, Dimitri, you could fill out a speaker slip, man.
As you all know, I've been on this, the, what is it called, advisory?
Steering committee.
Steering committee. And the East Side is in big support of the, of the project as a whole. We've worked very closely, you know, regarding the design and other issues. We still have, there's one item that we're concerned about, which is the shuttle buses still staying on the, on the East Side, where we feel it would make more sense for them to be at El Camino with the taxis, because we feel that if you leave a space, all the taxis are going to come, and then there'll be an enforcement issue, and it's, it's a bit of a mess. So, other than that, we think the project's great.
Okay. Thank you very much. I need a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Sir, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to kick this off, Mr. Collins or Mr. Olbert?
Stop.
Yeah, we don't have anything yet?
Don't really have anything yet.
Uh, the only thing, Mr. Gercilli, do you have anything yet?
I would just like to, uh, Mr. Fletcher pointed out that PG&E has been very helpful in this project, so I know Mr. Kogan's here in the background, so extend our thanks to your group. You guys have been doing a wonderful job here in San Carlos. So, I will entertain a motion then.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2012 dash...
Three?
Three. Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, establishing an underground utility district in a portion of the city of San Carlos, designating said district an underground utility district number 2012-05, describing the boundaries of said district and establishing the times in which poles and overhead wires shall be removed and underground service provided.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gercilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10A, unfinished business. This is consideration of approving amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix. Mrs. Mendenhall?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is an update on the city's strategic plan. On August 29th, the council met with the city manager and department directors for the 12th time to discuss the city's strategic issues and goals. This report will serve as the January 2012 monthly report. There are two requested revisions tonight, one date change and one title change. The first revision is to change the date to present to council for action organizational alternatives for the Public Works Department from the date of January 31st to February 15th. The second revision is to change the title related to the sewer master plan from completing a draft to providing an update and schedule for completion of the draft. There are 16 objectives that have been completed, including the following: Hold a city council study session regarding the potential elimination of the RDA; Provide a report to city council on the dissolution process of the current fire JPA; Present to the city council an update on police services; Present a plan to the city council on moving police dispatch to the county; Begin the fire services for the San Carlos Fire Department; Identify and provide emergency preparedness training to those employees who need it; Complete L'Oreal Park Playground Development Project and Hold the Ribbon Cutting; Recommend a city council for action options for the Library Interior Renovation Project; Conduct a feasibility study on the use of synthetic turf at Cresvey Park and make a recommendation for the city council for action; Present to the city council for consideration a policy on electronic communications and devices; Present to the city council for consideration a city manager newsletter for distribution to the community; Analyze and present options for public kiosks at strategic city locations; Schedule and hold two public focus groups to gather input about desired website features; Hold the first quarterly meeting with representatives of key community volunteer groups and service clubs to coordinate community events and volunteer efforts and report the results to council; Go live with the new permitting software; And finally, to identify at least 10 volunteers to help monthly with trash removal at public gathering places. So, in summary, we've had 16 items from the plan completed, and there are two requested revisions tonight. The next strategic plan retreat is scheduled for Wednesday, February 29th. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Again, seeing none. Is there any council discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion. Someone's got to jump.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the city's strategic plan and the six-month objectives matrix.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Member Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gercilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business. Item 11A, consideration of authorizing staff to provide lighted tennis courts at Highlands Park for general public use. Mr. Long?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. Some of you may recall, in 2007, things weren't going so well in the city, so there was a, a number of strategies to help curtail the budget deficit the city was facing. One of those strategies was to eliminate lighting the courts at Highlands Tennis Courts. Since that time, the city has implemented strategies to help solve the structural deficit, and we've been getting a number of requests to return to the same schedule of lighting the courts that we had prior to 2007. So, this is a request to return those, that service to the tennis community. At this point in time, the estimated, estimation is about $2,000 for the remainder of the year. The budget for that particular item is about $4,000 annually. So, if the council provides this direction, we'll be able to return that service immediately. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from Mr. Long? Mr. Olbert?
No.
Mr. Gercilli?
No.
Mr. Collins?
No.
My only question is, if we approve this, when do they get turned on?
I can turn them on tomorrow.
Okay. We will open up for public comments.
Actually, Mayor Klein?
Yes.
May I, actually, did think of a question?
Yeah.
If may ask. What would be the cost to establish the lighting at any of the other tennis facilities? There was an email, there was a fair amount of email traffic this afternoon from residents who were interested in seeing us approve this motion, and one of the, one of the writers talked about how there were other tennis courts around the city that they would like to see lit.
The only other ones that we have control of are the ones at Burton, and we have returned those to, those were never turned off at Burton, I believe.
Just intermittently, but not permanently.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we will go to public comments. Is there any public comment for item 11A? I see some of our San Carlos Tennis Club members are here. You could fill it out after you speak. If you just want to introduce yourself and...
Hi, my name's John Gear. I'm a very big fan of the tennis programs that are going on in town, and I just wanted to tell you how important it is for us to get more space. We have many, many players that just don't have a place to play, and I also wanted you to know that the courts at Burton, the lights are so poor over there, it's extremely difficult to play, and most of us don't play over there because we're a little older and we don't see that well, and when the lights are a little dimmer, we don't see even worse. I just wanted to thank you for considering this motion and going ahead for us and tell you how many people are not able to play during the evening hours, and most of us are pretty busy on the weekends, and how much it would be important for us to get the lights back on. We really miss them. We did really spend a lot of time on those courts, and we really look forward to having them on. As far as the other costs for the other areas, if there are any questions you had on that, I could probably give that information to you.
Okay. I don't think we have any questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Nope. All right, I see people moving, but guess not. Okay, we will go to discussion. Is there any discussion?
Looks like you have another speaker. Sorry.
I'm a tennis player also. We have other people in the audience, but we'll just be repeating each, what each of us says. So, we have players that go all the way from their 80s down to the kids, and it would really be great to have those lights on. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if you can just have the speaker introduce themselves before they speak, that would be great.
That was Gail Goes.
I know.
Okay, seeing none of the speakers, we will go to discussion. Mr. Olbert, do you have anything?
Actually, I did have a question, but it's more of a process nature on these types of requests that come in, so perhaps we should hold that till after we've had the discussion, or you want me to bring it up now?
What, the request about Burton Park?
I would personally find it kind of helpful when we're looking at proposals to spend additional funds, if we were able to put it in context with how the overall budget state is and the impact, and, and as we are sort of looking to make individual adjustments to spend additional money, that we sort of keep a running tally of where we are.
Okay.
Just because, I don't want to make it sound like, you know, $4,000 a year is not a huge number either way, but just on a, on a basis of being clear about stuff, I find that kind of thing kind of helpful.
All right, Mr. Moppy, you got that?
I do. You'd like to track the incremental changes to the budget and get like a brief update with each report that's making a request.
Right. And then related to that is, is the notion that personally, I would actually find it useful to sort of aggregate some of these things and not deal with them all just individually, because that, I don't want to end up in a situation where... because that, I don't want to end up in a situation where we individually approve something, and then two months later, somebody comes up with another idea, and it's like, oh, you know, if I had known that, I would have approved the other rather than this. So that's, that's what I meant by process changes.
Okay. Mr. Grisilli?
No. Just unfortunately, things come, just to your point, I would too accept the fact that they just come up as they come up, and I asked Mr. Malpe why we even voted on this for $2,000, because he's got upwards of $50,000 to do whatever he wants every day, but he felt that because we turned them off, voted to turn them off, we should vote to turn them on. You know, in those, in those cases, I think this amount is just nominal, but that's a process that he wanted to do, so.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
My only comment is I really enjoyed reading all the emails I got today.
Okay. The only comment I have, I want to thank Mr. Long and his staff and the San Carlos Tennis Association. The impetus of this, and I want to thank them for their offer, was the San Carlos Tennis Association offered to pay for the lights and turn them on themselves in exchange for some time on the court, and it's such a nominal fee that a lot of us felt that the city should just take care of it and let you guys play for free, you know, when you guys just have pickup games. So again, thank you to everyone who was involved, had some great meetings, we got to read some a lot of fun emails, so it's all I've got, so I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Ron.
All right, I'm just going to take a stab at it. I move that we authorize staff to provide lighted tennis courts at Highlands Park for general public use.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 11B, consideration of authorizing staff to replace 23 distressed iron bark eucalyptus trees at Burton Park with trees suitable for that location. Mr. Long?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This was brought to our attention by an email that we received from a neighbor at Burton Park who had observed a large branch that had fell in the basketball court area. This became a safety issue, so we requested that a certified arborist come and take a look at the tree to determine whether it needed to be removed or any other care to ensure that this wouldn't happen again. While we were at it, we decided since, since there are a number of the species at the park that we would go ahead and have them look at each one of the trees and give us a condition assessment. The report indicated a number of things. As I stated, there are 23 iron bark eucalyptus trees that surround the perimeter of Burton at Cedar and Arroyo, and the safety inspection was by a certified arborist. The trees on Cedar Street have weekly attached sprouts, this was the results of the report, and are now at risk of breaking off. Only three trees could be pruned to acceptable levels that would provide the safety that we require, and the remaining trees have weak structures and cannot be mitigated. Again, this is from the arborist's report. Trees on Arroyo Avenue have been topped annually for line clearance by PG&E, and several have poorly attached sprout limbs and wounds. Now, the overall findings show that root zones covered by asphalt resulting in root cracking asphalt, heavy limbs over street sidewalks and courts, and they call those the target zones where these may fall. Excessive weight on lateral limbs, poorly attached limbs, fungal infection, and old wounds from failed branches. To give you a visual, this is Cedar, you can see the tops of the iron bark eucalyptus. They line the street, and again, on Arroyo here, and there's one on Woodland, or excuse me, Chestnut, that's just right at the corner. These are the ones that have been topped, and actually, some of these long ago have been topped. Once you top a tree, you compromise it. It opens it up for disease and weakens its structure. If you looked at the report, you'll notice that the arborists didn't assign a number to each one of the trees, and we have these corresponding, I'll just zip through so you can kind of see what we're talking about in terms of size and...
Mr. Long, before you do that, do you have pictures of all 23?
Pardon me?
Do you have pictures of all 23 trees?
Yes, I do.
Will you make sure to point out which one of the three that are considered healthier?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is, and again, I'll kind of hurry through this so we don't have to spend a lot of time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about any specific trees you may have. But this is the start on Cedar. This is the one that's nearest the baseball field at Burton. It's a rather large, fully grown eucalyptus tree. We estimate these trees to be 60 to 70 years old, and their lifespan is, you know, they say greater than 15 years, less than 100, so you know, they're kind of, they're aged. Some of the trees have much smaller in diameter trunks, and that may be because they were, they were sawed off at one point in time and grew back this nature. Again, you can see the difference in trunk diameter. This is a rather thin iron bark eucalyptus, still the same species. Here's one of the trees that the recommendation is to, the ultimate recommendation is to remove all the trees by the arborist, but they did, he did state, the arborist stated that three could be saved if there were certain care that were applied to the trees. This is one of them, 6, 7, and 13. And you can see where this is located, just at the end of the fence and the entry of the baseball field. And number seven is right next to the Kiwanis Building. And you can see, these are rather large, these are 70 feet tall. As we move down to the tennis courts, these are some that have been recommended again for removal for various reasons. 13 is the other one that they recommended that if there were proper care, they could be saved, and once again, the recommendation was to remove all 23. And this is to the end of Cedar, now we go on to Arroyo, and you can see where they've been topped, and they've been topped to accommodate the power lines, and you can see that they are in, rather distressed. You can see the difference between those and the healthier trees that, well, ostensibly healthier trees on Cedar. And that's the final tree at the corner right where the playground, the children's playground is, the top playground. So the idea is to, is a tree replacement program. It's, I know it's been characterized as removing trees, but we're thinking of it as replacing trees. We value our urban canopy, we value what trees offer our community, and the plan is to replace all 23 trees with a more suitable tree for that location. There have been suggestions to put native trees in the area, however, we would have a dialogue, making a recommendation of a number of trees, which would include non-native trees and explain why those trees would be candidates for those particular locations. We do hope to engage the public in this process, should the council decide to go ahead and remove some of the trees. The neighborhood would be interested in possibly giving some input on what trees would be there. We're thinking of trees that might have color, deciduous trees or evergreen trees, you know, we'll recommend certain trees for certain particular reasons. Their strengths for each individual species. We will actually probably be recommending a variety of trees, just to make aesthetically pleasing, but again, this is an idea to replace the existing trees. These trees were put there probably in the 40s, possibly in the 30s. Urban canopy, successful urban canopy programs need to be proceeded with advisedly and deliberately and back, in the 40s, they had eucalyptus trees going up Burton Avenue, and those have since been removed. Things do change, and we see once again that there is a safety factor involved here as identified by the arborist. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Long? Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, I'm wondering, well, I know you can't answer this question because these trees were planted so long ago, but one really has to wonder what they were thinking when they planted those eucalyptus trees under power wires. Rhetorical question. Anyway, assuming...
And it may be that the power lines weren't there first.
I thought about that, but...
Yeah, you never know.
Then you have to wonder why to put the power lines over these growing trees.
That's right, not across the street. That's correct.
So let's talk a little bit about the maintenance cost. Let's assume all the trees are healthy. What do you, what do you normally budget, or what do you estimate it costs typically to take care of these kinds of trees in their current location?
You know, is, you might want to come up and help with the question.
I'm not looking for an exact number, I'm just curious.
And Guy Wallace, the park superintendent, can provide you some of that detail, but I can say that eucalyptus trees are generally more expensive than other trees because of the care necessary for that particular species, but you might give them a...
So a tree this size that was in, in good shape, typically would be about $400 per tree on about a three to five-year cycle.
Okay. All right. And I know you asked about getting public input on the type of trees. Have you thought, I mean, obviously, you've probably thought of the types of trees that you might plant in different areas. I would assume you'd probably want trees that don't get very big under those power wires, that can be easily pruned and that sort of thing.
That would be one of the criteria we'd look at, absolutely.
Okay. And I think I'll, I'll save the rest of my comments for general discussion.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, thank you, Andy. So the, one of the questions I had, Doug, is to what extent is, is some of the difficulty that we're running into with the trees now the result of the way PG&E is choosing to prune trees?
For the ones on Arroyo, that's...
A significant factor.
Very significant factor.
Okay.
However, given the fact that there are problems with the ones on Cedar, it's not the only contributing factor.
Okay. I take it that that'll, following up a little bit on what Ron was saying, that'll be a factor in, in what kinds of alternative trees you look at putting in?
Absolutely.
And is there an opportunity to have a dialogue with PG&E about seeing whether maybe there are some, I don't know, less invasive, less disruptive practices that could be used?
Certainly.
I suppose dealing with this once every two generations isn't too fast, but...
That's right.
I guess I, I still like trees, and I'd kind of like to not, you know, be damaging them when we don't need to. Is the plan that we would be holding off actually removing any of the trees absent some imminent safety issue until we had completed the public input process and you had decided what, what new trees you were going to place?
That's correct.
Okay. So we wouldn't be having a situation where there'll be, the park will be denuded of trees for a while?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the last question I had for now is, given that this came up around Burton, are there other areas of the parks or areas in the city where we should be proactively looking at this?
Indeed, and we do, and...
I didn't mean to imply you weren't, I guess, but I'm wondering whether or not we do that as a matter of course, and if not...
Yes, we do. We do tree inspections as part of our regular park maintenance program.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grisilli?
So I guess you sort of answered one question I had. So in effect, the council is being asked to vote to replace the trees, but we're going to have some more discussion and dialogue about what kinds of trees. Is that going to come back to us?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suspect it would come back to council. I think it's something we'd work with the neighborhood group, we'd work with...
Okay, let me then ask another question. Has, has the neighborhood been notified that the trees were, were, or that this was going to happen?
No. The, the neighbors will be notified when council gives us direction one way or the other.
Okay, so in effect, we could have just another hearing of a whole bunch of folks showing up saying, why are you taking my trees? I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it could happen.
They could do it probably if it was an agendized item. I would suspect they would want to do it under public comment, because this item may not come back to the, the council should, council give direction.
Okay. I was trying to figure out the car to the horse, I was just trying to...
That's right.
Do you have any estimate of size, a gallon size of the trees that would replace it?
The 24-inch boxes?
So two feet across?
Yes. Similar to the ones that we just planted at L'Oriola, but I...
L'Oriola? And how tall are those? I apologize.
They're what?
Eight, 10, 12 feet.
10 or 12 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions I had.
Okay. The only question I have, Mr. Long, is there's other municipalities that are systematically eliminating eucalyptus trees, correct? I mean, from what I've heard, it's San Francisco, the Mid Peninsula Open Space District, and others?
Yes, they are, and these, eucalyptus got somewhat of a bad name during the Oakland fires, when they figured that they were one of the higher burning fuel that the fire used for that, but there are other reasons that, that eucalyptus are no longer being encouraged to be planted, and they're encouraging the removal of these in a lot of different jurisdictions.
Okay. That was my own question. So thank you, Mr. Long. We'll open up for public comment. Is there any public comment on item 11C? Do we do?
11B.
Oh, sorry, 11B. If you guys feel free to come up one at a time and introduce yourself, and when you're done, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to our city staff.
Okay. My name's Marilyn Moon. I live at the corner of Howard and Cedar, and I have two heritage trees, and every year I have them, arborists come out and trim them, feed them. It, it costs me a nominal amount. Should I let that go, the limbs would fall off, and it would, it would be a bad situation, and in the end would cost me a lot of money. It seems to me that it would be terrible to remove the eucalyptus trees. That has a wonderful aesthetic look to it, and it also seems to me that it would be much cheaper to take care of the trees that are there, rather than dig them all up and plant new ones. That, that seems like it would cost an awful lot of money. Looking at my pocketbook, it would. And I also would suggest that you have a second opinion from another arborist.
Okay, thank you. Sandra Menton?
Mayor Klein, city council members. The Park and Recreation Commission voted at their January meeting 4 to 0 to preserve trees number 6, 7, and 13. These three trees have been identified in the arborist's report as in need of pruning to continue growing in a natural manner. They stand, these trees stand as tall sentinels to introduce people to the park, to point the way to entrances in the park, and they also give us a sense of tree history, having been there for nearly 70 years. Nature does not plant her landscape with only one type of tree. Some trees are tall, some trees are bushy, some lose their leaves, some are green all year long, some are different shades of color at different times of the year, others remain green. And the tree canopy of our parks could contain this variety of trees by keeping the ones that I mentioned, number 6, 7, and 13. It would meet the criteria of a variety of, of trees in the park, and it would give opportunity for children and families to point out the different characteristics of trees and why some grow tall, why some have this type of bark, and why some lose their leaves in, in the fall and others keep their leaves all year. I would like to see these three trees kept and maintained in a healthy condition, and it is my opinion that council should take action for keeping the trees and removing the others that are diseased, and then filling in as the time goes on, as, as Director Long has described for you. An additional component of the plan would be to replace the 30 eucalyptus trees and have a discussion with PG&E about undergrounding the wires, so that the trees that are planted along Arroyo would not grow into the overhead lines, even though there may be trees that are said not to grow that tall, still, this might be an opportunity for the city to work with PG&E to underground the wires there to see that it didn't inhabit, it didn't inhibit the growth of the new trees or the trees that are along other parts of the park that might impinge upon utility lines. This plan would give us variety, and it would give us history and character to our first park in San Carlos, Burton Park, by saving these three trees and incorporating... park in San Carlos, Burton Park, by saving these three trees and incorporating them into the landscape that is there now. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Sam Hertzberg?
Good evening, city council. I'm just speaking to an individual tonight, 1196 Sylvan Drive in San Carlos. And in my day job, I work as the park planner with San Mateo County Parks. We deal with tree removal and power lines on a regular basis, San Berna Mountain, Coyote Point, particular Uniper Sarah County Park. Eucalyptus were originally brought here for, somebody had the idea of using them for, for furniture in Niles Canyon, and they didn't learn until later that they crack when you try and cut them, and they're also very hard wood. They try and make patio furniture out of them today, and those patio tables weigh easily over 1,000 pounds when they're cured. They're exotic, they're invasive, they do not provide habitat for any of the local animals. So as you're thinking about the park, I would encourage you to think about the local wildlife, too. They drop the oils on the ground and very little grows underneath them. When you're landscaping, of course, you don't want to just be exclusive to all the alternatives, but do encourage drought tolerant, native, appropriate height trees that aren't going to get in the power lines. PG&E does have guidance documents, which I'm sure your park, park staff has already gotten, to provide some guidance as to the type of trees. PG&E also has incentive programs for tree planting, which is worth looking into as well, particularly in areas where they're public amenities, like a park. They may be more, look more interested in providing grants for tree replacements, so just want to make this comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hertzberg. Any other comments? I see none. We will move. She's leaving. We'll open up for discussion. Mr. Olbert, would you like to start?
Yes, I would. I very much appreciate staff's input on this, and I will say that despite my comment earlier about the fact that I really like trees and like living in an area with trees, it is, of course, necessary that we maintain them and keep them safe and whatnot. However, I don't know whether we can do this, but my inclination frankly is to see a more fully developed plan after an opportunity for public input and comment with neighbors, I'm thinking here, outside of this meeting, to act on rather than just tonight decide to do the replacement of the trees. But I want to be clear, I don't have any problem with, with moving in the direction of replacing diseased trees, which I understand the arborist is saying, you know, most of them really can't be saved. The ones that we can save, that's fine. But I just feel like there's, there's an opportunity here to have a more robust plan, and unless I'm missing something, I don't see the urgency necessarily to have to decide tonight on all those steps without giving people the opportunity to have comment and input.
Okay. Mr. Griselli?
Well, as Mr. Olbert sort of, you know, sort of piggybacked on what my question was, because we're going to hear this again. I mean, we can say we're going to just remove them, but we're going to still have people come, and again, that's fine, we can change our minds, or we can continue to vote the way we will tonight or not, depending on what the vote is. I think if we're going to take the trees out, we should take all 23 out and be consistent. I agree with Mr. Hertzberg, I grew up in Burlingame, and of course, the eucalyptus trees are rampant in Burlingame, and of course, the El Camino real, they're, they're humongous, and Burlingame in the past has had some difficulty with a few of them, and there's going to be more. There's going to be some storms in the next 10 years, they're going to cause some real, real, real problems, and I think, and Burlingame knows about it, but it's awful hard to take down the hundreds of trees, I don't know how many there are along the El Camino that are there. So eucalyptus, no fan, I'm no fan either. I, I sort of agree with Mr. Olbert to one extent, but I'm willing to vote on this item tonight, up or down, knowing again full well that we'll be having a similar discussion when, when it comes to public comment.
Mr. Collins?
Anybody that knows me knows how I feel about eucalyptus trees.
How do you feel, Ron?
I'll try to keep it brief. Dirty, ugly, messy, invasive, disease prone. I could go on, but I won't, I think you get my, my drift. I was going to say, I don't like them because they're, they're non-native, and I used to hide behind that when I was on Architectural Review if I didn't like a tree. But there are lots of non-native trees that I like, lots of, there's certain kinds of oak trees, and maples, and Chinese pistachio trees, and those type of things, some of which I'd like to see at Burton Park. I don't have any problem with, with removing the diseased trees, and I'd probably compromise on the, on the three trees that the arborist decided were worth saving, but they, they really are dangerous trees, particularly in storms. I, I play golf at a golf course that has so many eucalyptus trees, and when they come down, they're terribly expensive to remove. And we also had a, a eucalyptus tree that came down right on Cordilleras, right by San Carlos Avenue, a couple of years ago, and crushed a car with a man in it. I don't know how the guy survived, but it was a miracle that the man survived. And I talked with a former council member yesterday who would love to see a long-term plan to replace all the eucalyptus trees on San Carlos Avenue at, at some point. I, I guess I, I, I'm more in Mr. Griselli's camp in that I would like to, I'd like to decide this issue tonight, although I, I don't think I'd have much of a problem with a public hearing. I'm not sure it would change my mind in the long term, because these trees have been around at least, well, as long as I've lived in San Carlos, and my family moved here in the mid-'50s, and they were there then, so I would, I would love to see a variety of trees when, when the new ones are planted, because, you know, if you have one type of tree, a common disease could maybe wipe them all out, sort of like the, you know, Dutch elm disease, that, that sort of thing. So I would, I just, I'll just close with, I, I think it's not a question of native versus non-native, it's a question of appropriateness, and, and I think that's where we ought to go with it.
Okay. Mr. Long, I actually have a question. Sorry to make you come back up. Part of our application to Tree City, to become a Tree City USA is we're going to have to have a tree board, correct?
That is correct.
Do we currently have anyone acting as a tree board, or...
We do, it's the Parks and Recreation Commission.
So isn't this more appropriate to go back to them, for them to discuss?
Yes, and, and what will be coming before the council, the planned next meeting, is a proposal for an urban canopy program, and the urban canopy program will give a provision to engage the public in providing input into tree plantings. So the way we envision this, when we present it to, to the council for this evening and for your consideration, is that you would give staff direction to replace the trees, we would actually go back and engage the neighborhood in our proposals for some trees to consider, we would take that information to the Parks and Recreation Commission slash Tree Board and make a presentation for them, and have them provide us direction on what needs to be, what they would desire to be planted at that particular location. During that dialogue, the public would be invited to provide their input, whether they're neighbors of Burton Park or not, and then we would go ahead and implement the program. Now, if it's council's desire that we add another step and come back to council for approval, we can certainly do that.
Okay. I'm sure we can talk about that during the urban canopy program, but I'll bring it up again, and I don't know who the council member that, or former council member that Mr. Collins talked to, but I totally agree, I think we need to stop replacing these eucalyptus trees, they are dangerous trees. So I'm in favor of removing all 23 and making the decision tonight, so Mr. Griselli, if you'd like to try a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, and again, as, as Mr. Long said, it appears, and I didn't realize there was a, a board, so to speak, or whatever, so it sounds like that the, the discussions for the new trees is going to be at, at Park and Rec level and not necessarily going to come back to this body again, but yet we have to make the decision on the, on the larger one for this.
Hold on really quick, Mr. Griselli, Mr. Collins is flagging.
I, I just have a question. The recommendation is that we authorize staff to replace all 23 distressed iron bark eucalyptus trees, but as I look down, I notice that Parks and Rec Commission voted 4-0 to preserve those three trees. Are we just...
You can vote any way you want, there's a lot of, that's why there's alternatives.
All right, Mr. Griselli, you want to give it a shot?
I'll make a motion to, for option one, the city council authorized staff to replace the 23 iron bark eucalyptus trees with trees suitable at that location.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
No.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to need another motion then. I see we're going to need another meeting. Mr. Collins, would you like to make a motion, or we can...
May I amend the motion to recommend that city council authorize staff to replace the distressed iron bark trees with the exception of trees number six, seven, and 13?
Is there a second for that motion? The motion dies for lack of second, so you have no recommend, no motion now, city staff, I guess we will have to bring this one back when we have a fifth member. Okay, moving on to...
On the next agenda.
Yeah, it'll be on the next agenda. Moving on to 11C, consideration of options for the Kiwanis...
If you're going to speak...
You have to come, and I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, we, we're not in public comment right now, so if you want to ask a question of our city manager, he can fill you in on whatever your question is. So we'll be moving on to item 11C, consideration of options for the Kiwanis Building at Burton Park to resume the city use or lease extension with Arbor Bay School. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, before you begin, I just want to make an announcement. I've looked into this, this particular item, and I believe I have a potential conflict of interest on it. My youngest son goes to school at Arbor Bay School, and in an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robbins. Okay, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, mayor and members of council. Tonight, we're here to discuss the lease of the Kiwanis Building at Burton Park to Arbor Bay School, and the question for the council is what is the time at which to resume city use of that building? So just to give you a little background, particularly in light of the fact we have some new council members, the leasing of the Kiwanis Building at Burton Park came up during the 2008/09 city budget. It was one of 30 reductions in that particular budget to budget the general fund balance in that year. The park was closed, and then staff was directed by council to have an RFP process to lease the building. We set several criteria, including uses that were appropriate for the site, addressing concerns of the neighbors, traffic, et cetera. Ultimately, a year later, after looking at the different proposals, the city council approved a lease in June 2009 with Arbor Bay School. The lease had a three-year term with an option for two more years. The initial lease term ends July 31st of this year, and so now it is timely for the council to decide at what point the building returns to city use. As staff looked at this, and we did have a meeting with Arbor Bay School before we brought this to you tonight, it's kind of an interesting situation. On the one hand, we believe at the staff level that the lease arrangement with Arbor Bay has worked well. We think that the use at the park was very appropriate, we think Arbor Bay has been a fine tenant at the site, and certainly there's value in that lease process. The lease with Arbor Bay did provide the city with key needed revenue during the times when we had tough budgetary issues. But as the slide notes, things have changed over the last couple of years. Particularly in the last 12 months, the city council has made some significant changes in the way that several key city services are delivered, and so the city budget is now no longer in deficit. Another key point is that the school district's recent entry into the recreation and preschool marketplace has reduced Park and Recreation access to some school facilities. Third, Park and Rec staff have indicated that if the building is returned to them either this year or at a future date, they would be able to offset much of the rental revenue that we're receiving today through revenue gained through new program services and events. And finally, as we note, since this is the option year, this might be the opportune time for the council to return the building. In terms of alternatives, in the staff report, we've outlined three key alternatives, and then I'm going to ask the city manager to comment on his thoughts about the three alternatives. Certainly, your first alternative is not to extend the lease and return the building to the city this summer. And we've talked to Park and Rec, and they've indicated that if that is the council's wish, that they would be willing to accept the building back and they could program it in a timely fashion. The second scenario would be to extend the lease for one year. This would allow Arbor Bay a bit more time to find a new location for their services, but it would also give us a relatively earlier transition back to Park and Rec uses as opposed to doing the full two-year extension. And the third option is to award the two-year extension, but then to make plans to transition the building back in the summer or fall of 2014. And then finally, as we do with all our staff reports, we provide the option for the council to provide staff with other direction. And as I noted in the, the report, in reviewing this set of alternatives with the city manager, I believe that it is his inclination to lean towards option two, so with that, I'll ask him to comment.
Yeah, and that, that's really all I had to say on the subject, was to make it clear that after having some further discussions with the Parks and Rec staff, council members, and some members of the public, that it seems to me that the option that would serve everybody's interests here in the best way possible would be to extend the lease for one year, allowing Arbor Bay, who's been a good tenant, provides a very solid program out there at the Kiwanis Building, the opportunity to find adequate space for their programming before we move forward with reprogramming it for recreation, Parks and Recreation uses here in San Carlos.
So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council, or you can open up the public comment process.
Are there any questions? Mr. Olbert, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Brown. Can you give me a little sense on the economics of the, of the programs that the city would be looking to put in to the Kiwanis Building? I, I just want to make sure that, that we're actually, you know, what the fiscal impact would be of terminating the lease.
I think I'll turn that over to Mr. Long.
Okay.
Yeah, we've taken a, a look at it, and some of it, we, we know from existing programs, and programs that we would repopulate that building with, that would shift those programs from the adult community center and/or the youth center back to the Kiwanis Building, and that would in itself open up more programming opportunities at those facilities that would be suitable for those locations, or kind of, you know, putting a square peg in a round hole in some of the programs that we're now offering at, at those particular facilities. And also, we would consider new programs over there, there's new opportunities when we have facilities, and particularly when we see the demographics shift in San Carlos, where we see a much younger population with much younger children, we would see a lot more taught programs, parent and taught programs going in at the, at the Kiwanis Building. So we project, you know, net revenues of about $70, $73,000 with the, the programs that exist that we plan to have over there that are proven programs, and with programs that we anticipate will go quite well according to what the demand seems to be at this particular time. And we do have to understand that there is a certain amount of resources that we'd have to allocate that we aren't currently allocating, and that's custodial and things like that, and there's a price tag with that, that was estimated at about $55,000 to just care for the facility, that, and I don't believe we're, we're taking on much of that responsibility at this point, is that correct? So that's an additional cost to the, the facility itself.
So would that reduce the net profit margin, if you will, to use a term, from 73 to 18?
That's correct.
Okay. And it, it sounds like you have quite a few moving pieces here that you, with the adult center and the youth center and whatnot, have you looked at what you would be able to do if we did not return the Kiwanis Building to Parks and Rec utilization in terms of using those other resources to try and implement as many of these additional programs as...
Well, we're limited now. We, we've, we've been doing that for the past couple of years through the, the length of the lease, where we actually had to shift these programs to the other facilities, and we've, we're always entertaining the notion of developing new programs with the available space. We're obviously not using all of the facilities all of the time, but during the key times, we don't have those spaces available because of the programs that used to be housed over at the Kiwanis Building. So, you know, it's, it, it's difficult to try to determine, you know, what we could, we would have to cancel one of those programs to offer a new program, and, and, for example, the youth center, one of the rooms in there, we would have to cancel that program in order to offer a new program, where if we did have access to other space, we could have that program in addition to another program. where if we did have access to other space, we could have that program in addition to another program.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Griselli?
So if I understand this right, even though the staff report indicates that there'd be approximately 80 percent-- and again, correct me if I'm wrong-- 80 percent offset of the revenue, which is really less than that because of the cost of the maintenance.
Well, if you factor that, I mean, there's all kinds of things you can factor in.
Right.
But just, you know, for full disclosure, there is, there is--
Right, there is that cost. And I mean, in effect, really, what we're looking at is, is opportunity costs, I don't know what you want to call it, relative to moving, as Mr. Olbert said, moving parts, different programs that we could offer, more flexibility. You can't necessarily put a dollar value on that, but, you know, so it's sort of nebulous about what the actual dollars are relative to this proposal. I think it's more to me, well, that's a comment more than a question, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that was there. What other question do I have? I get, yeah, is this program, does this school close during the summer?
I don't believe so.
It's year-round, okay, fine. I just want to, I just want to make sure that people, most schools close during the summer.
Right.
So this one doesn't. So it's a 12-month lease, and they're operational all 12 months?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't really have any other questions.
Just, just for more information, just to kind of let you know, and we, again, a lot of the stuff is, you know, we can speculate the best we can, but we saw about a 35 percent decline in actual participation in recreation programs that would normally be housed in one of our facilities. So that's absent, you know, that's excluding our camps that occur at the parks or our sports programs. But we saw a decline. Now, that decline came at, you know, difficult economic times. We don't know how to, how much to attribute to that. That decline came at the same time the school district decided to offer similar programs on their facilities. But we can probably attribute some of that decline to the loss of that particular facility.
Mr. Collins?
Sorry to keep beating up on this, but we're projecting $73,000 approximately of income. But that $55,000 is an ongoing annual cost that would come out of that 73?
That's correct.
And do we have any maintenance costs now, or is it all borne by Arbor Bay School?
It's predominantly borne by the leasing.
All right, so if the roof leaks, who pays for that?
If the roof leaks, it's the city's responsibility for the facility as the lesor.
And if there are plumbing issues, or electrical boxes, or things that go bad, we still--
And we'd have to look to the four corners of the agreement, but I'm assuming it is the city's responsibility as related to the facility itself.
Now, is, and is the $73,000, is that based on your estimate there will be higher use or higher revenues because we'll have a building available? I mean, is it a conservative number? Is it a, is it sort of a ballparking number?
Yeah, well, it's a ballpark conservative number. It's both of those. We try to, we try to look at these things conservatively, what we do with the current trends and what's available, and we do that conservatively. We could, it could range anywhere between 73 and $100,000, over $100,000 in revenue, net revenue.
You think it's more likely that it might be well in excess of 73,000?
I think, I think with what we have planned, it's likely to exceed, you know, the 73,000. But again, we want to be conservative and practical in what we're looking at in the existing programs and what we might add. But there's, there is a likelihood that it could be more.
Thank you.
Okay, my only question, well, I have a handful of questions, actually, Mr. Long. So the $73,000, I know we keep getting stuck on the $73,000. That's from the programs being offered at the Kiwanis Building, correct?
That is correct.
And just the Kiwanis Building?
That's correct.
How much more money are you going to make for the availability of the youth center and adult community center?
That's another factor that could be significant also, because that opens up those rooms and availability for additional programming.
Do you know what that number is? Because you're implying that we're only going to make $73,000, but we're going to open up, if we did this, we would open up a lot more space than the other centers, which we'd make money off of.
That is correct, and that probably could easily offset the $55,000 that we would incur for taking back the facility.
I mean, because it's just intuition. If you have enough room by taking the programs that were, were housed in the Kiwanis Building and making $73,000, it would make just as much sense as you could possibly make that much money because you're freeing up that much space.
That's correct.
I mean, okay, so I know we keep getting, I don't know why the report was written this way. Who does? Maybe it should have been bullet pointed what we were really talking about. But $73,000 is just for the Kiwanis Building. It doesn't include the fact that there's more opportunity if we had, if we opened up the Kiwanis Building and our other centers.
That's true.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, just so I make us understand what you're getting at. I mean, fundamentally, what we're doing is we're adding one chunk of capacity, which is the Kiwanis Building.
Yes.
So why wouldn't we only look at essentially the revenue that could be generated from that one chunk of capacity? Because nevertheless, I presume that, that the youth center programs and the adult center programs or some analogous thing will continue to be used, or there'll be replacement programs for the one that moved over to Kiwanis. But the actual increase in capacity is only Kiwanis. So I think it really is the 70, I mean, given that it's conservative, but it, I think it really, the increment really is $73,000. It doesn't open up anything else, because those things really accounted for.
Give or take, but we don't know what kind of programs you're going to run, and there's different pricing for different programs, correct?
That's, that's why it's--
That's fair, but that'd be sort of a second-order effect, not a, not a primary one.
So be it. So my other question is, when it comes to our park and rec programs, or rec programs, what is the percentage of San Carlos residents who use the programs? So if you have 100 people in a program, how many people are actually from San Carlos?
Roughly 80 percent.
80 percent, is that a pretty high number relative to other towns, or is that pretty normal?
You know, I haven't surveyed, I think that's probably, it depends, it's probably on the high side.
Okay. Have we had issues since we closed the Kiwanis Center in the other, in the adult community center and the youth center by putting different types of programs there that weren't there before?
To a degree, yes.
And those would be, can you speculate on what they are? I mean, what are the programs that we're running into interference with at the other centers?
The lunch program, they would prefer to have the lunch program more than just a couple of times a week. They'd like to run it Monday through Friday. They can't because they're offering programs there that have been shifted from the Kiwanis Building into the youth center. We do have a program that, and I can't remember the name of the program, that's offered in the youth center and the TV room that makes that room unavailable to the drop-in participants that want to use that. So there are issues, logistical issues, that we have run into too as a result of incorporating those programs into those various facilities.
Okay, and then we have on our capital improvement plan a remodel of the adult community center coming up fairly soon. What's going to happen to those programs if we, I mean, where do they go while we're remodeling the adult community center?
Well, we'd have to take a look at that and see, you know, how we would be able to incorporate some of those programs into other facilities. Hopefully, it would be the Kiwanis Building that would be available, that we could ship them on a temporary basis. And we would hopefully stage the renovation to where we would be minimizing the impact on a lot of the programs, and that we could accommodate through stages folks over at the Kiwanis Building, so.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Are there any other follow questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Long. We have, first up, Jerry Jensen, followed by Pam Joy, and then Susan Rose.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Jerry Jensen, I'm a resident of San Carlos. My daughter is a, goes to school in, in the San Carlos School District. And I'm here tonight to ask you to consider Arbor Bay School a little bit beyond what you've discussed so far. I'd like you to consider it as a unique and vital community resource, one that's proven itself as a community resource and one that has greater potential to serve the community in the years to come. I'm a parent of a child with special needs, and I've been fortunate to have access to the resources of Arbor Bay School through the school's unique partnership with the San Carlos School District. Perhaps as many as 10 to 12 percent of school-aged children in San Carlos need the, need special education services. And we all know, we've, we've all heard of the so-called autism epidemic, and we, as we've, we've just discussed, we know that resources are tighter than ever. When we consider the community need for leading-edge expertise in helping our children with special needs reach their greatest potential, it's easy to see how resources like Arbor Bay can play a critical role in the health of our community. One of Arbor Bay's most important attributes is its ability to flex to any situation. Many students attend Arbor Bay School during a particularly challenging period and then return to their home school with greater potential for success. When Arbor Bay's middle school class was housed on the Central Middle School campus, Central students frequented the Arbor Bay classroom during free times when the traditional recess environment was too overwhelming for them. My middle student, Claire, my middle school student, whose name is Claire, was a frequent visitor with her Arbor Bay class to the Central Middle School campus, which gave both the Arbor Bay students and the students at Central Middle School a chance to integrate. And that happened after they moved to the Kiwanis Building, because they're right across the street from each other. And now, thanks to the remarkable collaboration between Arbor Bay School and the San Carlos School District, Claire currently attends both schools every day. My family loves being a part of this community. We enjoy the many ways the community, that community spirit is nurtured and family life is supported here. Arbor Bay has done justice to the historic Kiwanis Building it inhabits. It's taken an active role in the life of our community in many ways, from participation in Hometown Days to student service projects that Arbor Bay students do in the community, to participating in Week of the Family events and publicizing those in the community, to providing education and after-school services to our differently-abled children, including the city attorney's child. There's a great need for resources like Arbor Bay in any community and, and in our community. And Arbor Bay has demonstrated a deep commitment to San Carlos in the short time it's been a resident here. And I ask you to be mindful of the type of program San Carlos families would like to see and would need in that historic space and how we can use that space to strengthen our community.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Pam Joy, and then Susan Rose.
Hi, council and mayor. Thank you for letting us talk. I'm Pam Joy, and I'm the founder and CEO of Arbor Bay School. I consider Arbor Bay a San Carlos school. Seven of the 14 staff reside in San Carlos. Their homeowners and all their children have attended San Carlos schools. My daughter went to Trinity Presbyterian and Heather and Central. One of our board members is a San Carlos business owner. Another board member is a retired San Carlos park and rec. One of our, our new parents read about a parent in San Carlos School District in Arbor Bay School and moved their family from China to attend Arbor Bay School. Many of the other students come from faraway areas, and the, the parents are in San Carlos shopping and doing all their daily chores all day long, often including breakfast and lunch. We consider ourselves part of this town. Speech pathologist, occupational therapist, behavior therapist, social skills classes are, are offered, and there's a shortage of those kind of professionals in the United States, and particularly in California. And we've been available to San Carlos residents through all San Arbor Bay for 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Susan Rose.
Susan Rose, 411 Hillcrest Road, San Carlos. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. Arbor Bay School has been proud to be located in the Kiwanis Building for the past two and a half years. In addition to providing quality educational services for students with special educational needs in kindergarten through eighth grade, Arbor Bay has also invested in the San Carlos community and has been devoted to maintain the mission of the Kiwanis Building as a, as a space that supports community activities. In fact, when sponsoring a local Eagle Scouts project, we learned that this youth was the great grandson of Henry Nissen, the Kiwanis Club member whose efforts and devotion to community service made possible the construction of the Kiwanis Building so many years ago. Arbor Bay has been committed to be good stewards of the building during the time that the city was unable to operate it and has provided thus far over $200,000 in revenue to the city since fall 2009. We were required to make significant mandatory improvements to the building prior to inhabiting it. This included the necessary ADA accessible entries and exits, a smoke detection system, manual and automatic fire alarm system, and the two interior restrooms were renovated to meet ADA requirements. The cost of these capital improvements, nearly $85,000, was quite substantial for a small nonprofit like Arbor Bay. We are currently responsible for all maintenance costs, exclusive of the exterior of the building. Arbor Bay has also been committed to provide the use of the Kiwanis Building for community events. We have provided nearly 240 hours of volunteer support to Hometown Days, Week of the Family, and other San Carlos events to ensure successful continuance of these important activities. Arbor Bay is a strong advocate of the Parks and Recreation Department and is respectful of the services they provide. We are aware of the value they bring to the community. In that spirit, we have operated Arbor Bay School with a great respect to how the Kiwanis Building supports community activities and have worked hard to partner with the Parks and Recreation Department. This past summer, we welcomed the Parks and Recreation Preschool Summer Camp Program to our building for six weeks at no cost to the city. We feel that we are invested and a part of the San Carlos community and ask the city council to continue lease to Arbor Bay for the next two years. This will ensure a guaranteed revenue base of $91,620 to the city each year from our rent. The programs at Arbor Bay are making a dramatic difference in the lives of the most vulnerable youth in our community. Please join us in showing your commitment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to discussion. Mr. Olbert, Ms. Collins, one of you want to go first?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I should, under the heading of disclosure, mention to everybody that Susan Rose, the head of Arbor Bay, is actually a friend of mine. We've known each other for a number of years. And she also was gracious enough to provide a modicum of support to my campaign last fall. But despite that, I'm quite confident that I can deal with this issue objectively and fairly. The, I don't really have an awful lot to add here or to bring up here other than to say that personally, what I'd love to see the city do is actually to implement at least something like along the lines of what the city manager had proposed of extending the lease for Arbor Bay for another year. That would essentially give them 18 months from today, roughly. And quite frankly, a lot of that has to do not so much with the fiscal impact as, as just, I think they have been a good lessee for us. They have certainly been, they've gotten a lot of strong testimonials from many parts of the community, both for what they do in their day-to-day business and just in the way they've been supporting the community activities. And I'd like to make sure that they have a reasonable transition time. Long-term, obviously, there's no question in my mind that the Kiwanis Building is a, is a city asset. And, and in that sense, you know, we, Arbor Bay has been in the spot market for purchasing real estate capacity, or, you know, rental capacity from us. But I don't think the impact of delaying a transition until the end of fiscal, well, I guess, until June 2013 would be that onerous.
Okay, Mr. Griselli?
I look at it a combination, and Mr. Olbert indicated some of the thoughts that I had. As Ms. Rose indicated, it's $91,620, she's absolutely right, at least according to my math, too, that's guaranteed for as long as we have this lease. And when we have a park and rec program, we hope we can gain money. We hope we can't. I know our fiscal situation this current year before the government, or before the Supreme Court's decision last month was in pretty good shape. We're going to be coming into an item here in a couple of minutes relative showing that our financial situation is going to change. I look at this as, it's, it's a weighing of the flexibility of the Park and Rec Department versus perhaps a community interest of, of having Arbor Bay School. I know that we don't have a lot of extra property the city has, although apparently, we're going to be having a nice large building on San Carlos Avenue that's going to be vacant, which, who knows? Maybe we can spend some money there and put some folks in there for a while. Maybe we can spend some money there and put some folks in there for a while for Park and Rec. But that being said, I would lean toward extending this lease out for the time that it was set up originally, even though the third or the fourth and fifth year are options. I realize 18 months, first of all, I'm dead-set against a six-month cancellation of this lease. I think that's almost impossible, a burden to put on a school to try to find something to go in that time. 18 months is reasonable, as Mr. Olbert said, but I perhaps would even extend it out to the two years that way and make it sort of a finality. So they would be under the gun and there's no exception, so to speak, that in two and a half years, it would be over. But again, would guarantee us $180,000 over the next two years. And with the way the budget's going and the way a lot of the other things are going, I know it impacts some of the park and rec programs, but it's just really hard for me to, we seem to be doing a fairly good job. I know it's hard. It's easy for me to sit up here. I don't have to work with it as Mr. Long and Mr. Wallace does every day. It's easy to say that. But I would be inclined to go for the full extension of the lease and indicate that at that time in 2014, July 31st, this would end.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a hard decision for me. Growing up in this town, I signed up for Little League in that building. I was in the Kiwanis Club, used it for more things than I can remember. So the building itself is very near and dear to my heart. But I also know Susan and I, she gave me a great tour of the facility last week. It's a wonderful school. It's a great asset to the community. But I think we really have to look at the highest and best use of our facilities. And it's a basic fact, I think, that recreational opportunities for our residents are at a minimum in this town. You go to other towns and they have much greater use of facilities, they have many more facilities. We're rather limited. But again, I agree with Mark. I would not want to just say, six months, you're out. I'm in favor of extending the lease for a year. And perhaps the city could maybe work with them to find an alternative location during that year and a half period that's obviously within the city limits, that's as close as to the schools as can be possible. And Mr. Grisilli's right, there may be some excess property that might have a good use for them, but...
Always looking at the park and rec use, not the schools' use.
Well, I'm thinking of the schools' use. That's a little difference there. But it is a question of balance. This is, to me, the building is a real civic asset. I played with the fact of potentially extending it out for two years, and I agree, our financial situation is sort of tenuous right now. It may get a lot better, it may not. But I really would like to see the building returned to the community after a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I'm going to agree with a lot of what my councilmember said. You know, the Arbor Bay School is a phenomenal school and there was a nice, Susan Rose put in her, in the packet, there's a list of all the community events they help out in. And as a Rotarian, I can attest to that completely, they let us use their facility for the pancake breakfast every year. And, you know, we're probably not the best at saying thank you, but, you know, it is a great facility and they do a great job and it's a wonderful school. But I do agree with Mr. Collins, we have to look at the highest use for the facility and that is to return it to Parks and Rec as it was before. I didn't agree with the closure of the Kiwanis Building to begin with. I wasn't on the council, but I didn't think it was the proper thing to do anyways. So I would be, and I agree that six months isn't a long enough time to tell a school that you need to go shopping for a place. I think 18 months is much more acceptable. And I agree that maybe our city staff can help them out. We have a great amount of assets here in this city hall that I'm sure that we can try to find an equitable place for you to relocate to. But I think 18 months, a year and a half, is a fairly long time. So I'd be more apt to do that. And if there's no other discussion, I hear three councilmembers leaning towards 18 months. So if someone wants to do a motion...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we extend the lease by a year so that the school will have 18 months roughly from today.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item 11D.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I just wanted to perhaps have in the motion as a clarification that since that will require a new document, that you authorize the city manager to execute such a one-year extension.
Would you like to add that addendum, Mr. Olbert?
I would be pleased to accept that friendly amendment from...
Thank you. And we don't need a second for a friendly amendment, correct? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
Can we do one more?
Okay, sure. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Olbert.
Just a follow-up. Would it be possible, I actually would be fascinated to learn a little bit more over the next year or so about the financials of what the Parks and Rec Department is thinking of doing.
Okay.
Just love to get some more insight into that.
I'm sure, he just actually took off. I'm sure Mr. Long can work with you. I see Mr. Malp writing that down, and that's also something we could discuss during the strategic planning retreat.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Moore, item 11D, update on Caltrain, California High-Speed Rail Blended Operations Analysis and Authorization for Mayor to Send San Carlos Comment Letter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As the council probably knows, staff has been working with the various players at both Caltrain and High-Speed Rail on both the Caltrain Electrification Project and High-Speed Rail over the last couple of years. And we thought tonight we'd give you an update on Caltrain Electrification and also the request from Caltrain for a San Carlos comment letter.
Before you get started, Ms. Moore, I know we have some members of the Greater East San Carlos Board here. They sent a letter in and we forwarded it to Mr. Moore, so hopefully he will answer your questions in his presentation. If he does not, please make sure to bring them up during public comment and we can get you answers.
Okay. First thing is to talk briefly about some background about Caltrain Electrification, High-Speed Rail, and how these two things are linked. And I should mention that we do have scheduled for next month an agenda item about High-Speed Rail specifically. So this is going to focus more on Caltrain tonight. In terms of the genesis of this, as I indicated, in 2008, the voters passed Proposition 1A, which provided state funding through bonds for a California High-Speed Rail system from Sacramento to San Diego built in phases. A year later, Caltrain and the California High-Speed Rail Authority reached an agreement regarding the use of the Caltrain right-of-way as a portion of that system. Part of the concept was to have a so-called electrified system, which would share four tracks throughout the Caltrain right-of-way from San Francisco to, I believe it's Gilroy and Morgan Hill. And this agreement spawned a new organization called the Peninsula Rail Project, also known as the PRP, which engaged cities throughout the Caltrain right-of-way to talk about how these goals could be achieved. As we went through the process here in San Carlos, we met with the council and the community on a number of occasions, and the council set forth a number of goals and guidelines for staff. And I thought I'd reiterate them here. Obviously, we've had some changes on council, so as we have the discussion next month, you may wish to think about these and maybe even revisit them. But the goals that the council set for staff were to, throughout the process, keep the community informed. The council wanted us to work within the process with both Caltrain and High-Speed Rail to maximize the number of alternatives available to the San Carlos community, to minimize the impacts on San Carlos, both in terms of the city as well as residents, businesses, and property owners, look for opportunities to benefit from the project, and avoid direct costs to the city. And here, I wanted to highlight something that has occurred after the High-Speed Rail process went on hold, and I think this helps address Mr. Mayor Klein's question. It is not known, I think, beyond the staff and some of the folks working on this project, that after the last alternative analysis from High-Speed Rail, city staff and High-Speed Rail and Caltrain had a series of monthly meetings to talk about how we could look at the different designs, both overhead and underground, to meet the goals that the council had set forth. And in particular, we wanted to see if there was a way to, within the right-of-way, support things such as the historic Caltrain depot, the upcoming East Side Connect project, not impact Old County Road, allow for construction of the Transit Village if that's the council's desire, and to minimize impact on property. And so what we did with the help of HNTB, which is the engineering firm working on High-Speed Rail, is we found that by modifying the overhead alignment in San Carlos, and more specifically, moving the existing train platform south, almost to Arroyo, that you can, in fact, achieve all of the projects and all of the goals that the council had set within the right-of-way and achieve all of those things. In other words, you can move ahead with East Side Connect, you can not impact Old County Road, you can move ahead with the Transit Village, et cetera. Because of the timing of this design alternative, it has not yet reached High-Speed Rail documents. And there's been some confusion, I think, in the press and elsewhere, as High-Speed Rail continues to issue reports based on the original San Carlos design and not the alternative. So there is an overhead alternative which meets your objectives, but because it has not yet been incorporated into High-Speed Rail documents, it has created some confusion. So I wanted to put that on the table, just so you're aware of that. Let's talk now about blended operations. This was something that was proposed last year by Caltrain staff and later endorsed by several local legislators. The idea is to have Caltrain and High-Speed Rail share the existing two tracks of Caltrain for most of the route between San Francisco and Gilroy. The theory here is that if you did reuse the existing two tracks and basically added electrification signaling equipment and catenaries and things of that sort, you'd be able to reduce the construction impacts on properties along the Caltrain corridor and perhaps more significantly for purposes of ultimately building High-Speed Rail. Not only if you use this project in the corridor coming up the peninsula towards San Francisco, but also now there is talk of using the same approach, a blended system, quote-unquote, for the entryway to Los Angeles. And current estimates are that you could trim $20 billion, which is not an insignificant amount of money, off of the $98 billion price tag for High-Speed Rail by using a blended system, both in the San Francisco and the LA corridor. In terms of where we are today, as I alluded to earlier, California High-Speed Rail operations on the peninsula are technically on hold. They are not funded at this point, and that's one of the reasons that the San Carlos alternate design is not yet in the High-Speed Rail documentation, although it will be in the future. Right now, High-Speed Rail is focused on the route from Merced to San Jose and also from the route from Bakersfield to Palmdale, because those are the two potential next steps that would occur after the segment in the Central Valley is constructed. And in terms of the peninsula, the expression that one hears when you talk to High-Speed Rail staff and also Caltrain is they tell you kind of a sporting analogy that Caltrain has the ball at the moment. And in particular, the question is, is the blended operations acceptable to the cities and the residents along the corridor? So some of the initial considerations of the blended operations are, first of all, one could add so-called overtake tracks, which we'll talk about more in a minute, which could add additional capacity beyond just using the two Caltrain tracks for electrified operations for both Caltrain and High-Speed Rail. Second, cities that do not have grade separations, this would not include San Carlos, of course, potentially may need grade separations, because part of the proposal from both Caltrain and High-Speed Rail is to increase the speeds of these trains from 79 miles an hour to 110 miles an hour. This is not as fast as what you'd see in the valley, where in the less populated areas the trains could go up to as high as 220 miles per hour. But nevertheless, what this will have the effect of doing is increasing the number of trains that travel in each direction per hour, and it will mean that the so-called safety gates will be down much more frequently than they are today. Now, in the case of San Carlos and also in Belmont, because the grade separations are in place, that really won't impact us. However, because we're not at grade. But for those cities that are at grade, there is a potential of increased gate downtime and also congestion on local streets. And there has been some concern about that. That obviously needs to be studied. There's also a question about if cities along the Caltrain right-of-way that have not yet built their grade separations, I know there have been some council questions about this aspect, how are those grade crossings funded? Theoretically, High-Speed Rail might fund them, assuming the High-Speed Rail moves ahead. If not, if this is solely a Caltrain project, some of the cities have talked about turning to Caltrain, but as we all know, Caltrain is having their own financial challenges. Prior to the recent Supreme Court decision, there was discussion among some of the cities about using redevelopment money. That would appear to be not on the boards. And of course, there's always non-city redevelopment funds for those communities in that position. Here's a list of the at-grade crossings in San Mateo County. There's actually a longer list of all of the at-grade crossings in the Caltrain right-of-way. I think at this point, there are still 45 at-grade crossings from San Francisco to Gilroy. You'll notice that we're in the unique position, along with our neighbors to the north, of having no at-grade crossings, which puts us in a different category. And of course, there are other communities have as many as four to seven at-grade crossings, some of which have expressed some significant concerns about both of these projects for obvious reasons. In November, Caltrain released a Blended Operations Analysis Report. A copy of that report went to the council last week and also is included online in the city's e-Packets meeting portal. Staff met with Caltrain, along with staff members from all the other cities, along the corridor from San Francisco to Gilroy, excuse me, in December. And at that time, last month, they asked us if it was possible for each city to provide comment letters to Caltrain by January 15th. I think myself and others included explained that due to the usual tradition of councils canceling their second meeting in December, that would be challenging. So Caltrain has indicated they would be willing to take letters through the end of this month, but staff felt that it would be most appropriate to bring this to council at your first meeting in January to at least introduce this topic to you and give you an opportunity to meet the original deadline. But if council wishes to have more time, I think that opportunity is there if you want to continue this item. The findings in the report are interesting. What it says is that you can increase the number of trains that run along the corridor from four to five an hour per direction to eight trains per direction per hour by using these faster speeds, these electrified trains, this elector control equipment, et cetera. And you can do that without, with using the existing two tracks. In other words, without building any additional tracks. And that obviously has a lot of interest in San Carlos, since we have our grade crossings in place, that would mean no additional construction. The report also indicates that if you had so-called bypass or overtake tracks, you could add two more trains per direction per hour, or obviously even more than that. And so that's also part of the study. What's interesting to San Carlos here is the fact that one of the overtake track locations, and in fact, the preferred alternative at the moment, is in fact the so-called middle sector, which is between Hayward Park and San Mateo and the Redwood City Caltrain Station, or between Hayward Park and San Mateo and the San Carlos-Redwood City border just before Whipple Avenue. And so obviously, in the comment letter that you see tonight, staff recommends that we offer some comments about that, since it would appear at this point in time, there is a significant chance that if there are overtake tracks built, they could indeed be built in San Carlos. There's also segments proposed for north and south, as shown. There's also a notion of having a so-called longer bypass, where you'd only need one track rather than two. So here are some of the highlights in the comment letter. And again, part of the item tonight is for not only the council to take testimony and discuss this, but also to make any amendments that you'd like to make or enhancements to the letter as we've initially drafted it. In the draft letter, we point out that you could go up to eight trains per direction per hour without any overtake tracks, and that's obviously the most cost-effective option and the least disruptive one for everyone along the corridor. But that we also encourage Caltrain to study the location and number of overtake tracks that might be needed. In terms of the middle section, if that's the decision, which is obviously the section that would impact the length of San Carlos, there are a couple of different design scenarios. We touch upon one of those in the letter, which is the notion of potentially having bypass tracks that would be of a different design and height than the existing tracks, which both visually and operationally, we think would probably be the worst of all worlds. But if, in fact, this segment is chosen, we think that one of the things that the council and the mayor should do is include our May 2010 High-Speed Rail comment letter, because it does talk a lot about some of the pros and cons and some of the concerns that we have about the four-track alignment through San Carlos. And we think that the reality is that if you do build the middle section overtake track in San Carlos, this will essentially be just like building the original four-track High-Speed Rail. Speed Rail design. We've also had some discussions with both Caltrain and High Speed Rail last week and again today to verify that if in fact this section was chosen, that Caltrain and High Speed Rail would be open to the concept of using the alternate design that we showed you earlier, so that one, we would have all four tracks at the same height, and number two, we would have the potential of the viaduct design versus the berm. Council members who were on council during this discussion will probably recall that at our public workshop, there was a lot of interest among the public in having a viaduct design because you could potentially open up east-west traffic, particularly in the so-called industrial and arts area of San Carlos. So anyway, to wrap this up, we do have the draft letter in your packet. We would encourage council to provide any comments or revisions and then subsequently submit that letter to Caltrain. And let me talk briefly about next steps in the Caltrain electrification process. In your packet, you'll see this chart, and this is kind of the vision that Caltrain has now that they are in the lead, so to speak, for the blended system. The capacity analysis, which is the box in the upper left-hand corner, is the process that we're talking about tonight, and the comments would be, again, submitted this month. Subsequent to that, starting next month through either the summer or fall, there would be two additional processes that would occur. There would be a discussion of a service plan and operational analysis and also grade crossing and traffic analysis. And as you go through the flow chart, it shows you Caltrain's vision of analyzing different options, putting together a decision matrix, having public meetings, and ultimately doing an environmental and design process. And so in a bit more detail, sort of what's coming ahead is the two studies between February and the summer or fall are ahead of us. I think that many of the questions and issues that many people have about High Speed Rail and the blended system probably will be discussed in more detail at that point than at this stage of the game. And obviously, staff recommends that the city continue to be an active participant in this process as well as having council comments as it moves forward. In terms of the service plan and operations consideration study, this is the study that will deal with the overtake tracks and stakeholder requests, and I think this is the one that we'll probably be most interested in and active in since that would have the most impact in San Carlos. The other study that will occur will be the discussion of are there need for additional grade crossings in those communities that have not yet built them? And how are faster speeds and additional trains going to impact local streets, gate downtime, things of that sort? Obviously, staff would recommend that we monitor that process, but because we are grade separated, I don't think that's going to be quite as much gravity to us as the other. And then, as I indicated earlier, we've had some interest from the council in having a more detailed update on the state High Speed Rail project next month, and staff is happy to do that. We have quite a bit of information on the statewide project, the staging, and we can bring you up to date on what the city's done in the past, the council perspective, and then what you may want to do in the future. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, again, take public testimony and comment.
Okay. We'll start with you, Mr. Collins. Do you have any questions?
I'm going to pass at the moment.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, I do have a number of questions. And in fact, what's your protocol? Do you just want me to ask all of mine or stop after two or three and give?
How many do you have?
Probably about five.
No, that's fine. Go for it.
First off, just a simple clarification question for me. Tonight, what we're looking at is just providing feedback on that particular letter. We're not looking to provide feedback on High Speed Rail in general or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay. Just because I, just for my colleagues' benefit, I am extremely skeptical of High Speed Rail and have yet to have anybody actually give me a good solid explanation for why I ought to support it.
Mr. Olbert, not to interrupt, but just so the public knows, we will be having that discussion in February, however.
Next month. Okay. So that's not what we're doing tonight.
Not what we're doing.
Okay. So I do have comments ultimately about the letter, but let me ask questions first. Did any of the study look at what the impact would be of the other communities that did not do grade separation? And there was an item in the report where they referred to some of the stations where the stations are designed such that there's some negative impacts on onloading and offloading of passengers. Did they look at what would happen if those kinds of improvements would be made in terms of what that impact that would have on capacity and hence perhaps on not having a need for overtake tracks?
I don't know that the focus has been as much on capacity, although I suppose that could be an outcome. I think most of the discussion with the meetings I've been at with the other cities have been more about this notion of as you increase the number of trains and the speed, one, is it safe? In other words, running trains at 110 miles an hour versus 79, is it safe at grade with just the simple crossing arm? Or do you need more safety like a grade crossing? And another major concern, which I think will come out of one of these subsequent studies, is the concern of the other cities about how do, and again, this is a bit of a puzzle, I think, in some cities. On the one hand, there's, in some cities, the inclination to oppose High Speed Rail. On the other hand, if you oppose it or kill it, then there's no money for the grade crossings that you'll need anyway for Caltrain electrification. Because that process, that project could proceed without High Speed Rail, although admittedly, that would be challenging because at the moment, there's no identified revenue source for Caltrain to electrify.
Let me leave it perhaps as something for staff to think about, just in hearing your explanation. It does seem to me that aside from the safety issue, which I agree with you is a very significant one about trains barreling through areas without grade separation, anything that I would think increases the speed throughput of the train, it's, I mean, I'm not a railroad engineer, but it sounds like it would have to have some impact on the ability to schedule trains.
Right.
And the reason that I thought of this was, you know, our community did go to the step of doing the grade separations, and there was remodeling of the station, the onloading and offloading at the place. I would actually sort of hate to be in a position of having done that, and if it turns out that if other communities made similar investments, we might not need overtake tracks, but if they don't, we end up having to suffer the consequences of having overhead tracks. Do you see what I'm getting at?
I, I, okay.
There may be some interaction there.
Okay.
Or maybe not. Like I said, I'm not a railroad engineer. The, let's see. The other thing that I was not quite clear about from reading the report was, in terms of what the High Speed Rail project is looking to achieve, does the eight train per hour capacity of doing no additional trackage, is that sufficient? In other words, there's sort of a statement made about that's what the capacity is, but I couldn't tell whether that, well, is that a good thing or is it, that doesn't work or what?
Well, I think it'd be fair to say at this point that the High Speed Rail folks in Sacramento are keeping a low profile on all of this. I think they're kind of, put it mildly. I think part of it is they're waiting to see if the folks on the peninsula can come to agreement that first of all, they would support a blended system, and second of all, would they or would they not support the overtake tracks? Now, my impression, and this is strictly my impression, that reading between the lines, I'm led to believe that High Speed Rail would really like to see the nine or 10 train per hour or higher option because they believe they need that much capacity. On the other hand, in my discussions with Caltrain and with High Speed Rail, I've pointed out, and again, this maybe this is obvious to everyone, including them, that if you can limit the blended system in the early stages to strictly the existing two tracks, not only is it going to be much more cost-effective, but I think there's a much higher, you know, probability of acceptance on the peninsula. And I would think within that, there's also a potential that even though the report talks about Caltrain having six trains per hour and the balance being reserved for High Speed Rail, one presumes there could be some trading there too, that if there was a way to maybe have Caltrain only use five slots an hour and maybe High Speed Rail having the balance, that perhaps you could make it all fit within eight. I think that's all going to be discussed again in those two studies that occur starting in February. And part of my reaction when we had the meetings in November and December with the Caltrain staff is we'll certainly be able to work with you and get you the comment letter you're looking for from San Carlos and the other cities, but I think the main event in terms of many of the questions that people have is really going to be those two studies that come later.
Thank you for commenting on the capacity or trading capacity. That was one of my other questions. Last one. Again, in reading the report, the metric that they, it seemed to me, the primary metric they were looking to minimize was delay, minutes of delay per train. Which makes sense to me, but what I couldn't quite appreciate or figure out is, I wanted to put that in the context of a typical trip. So for example, just hypothetically, a five-minute delay on a, how long does it take to get to LA from San Francisco on this train? Four hours?
Couple hours, yeah.
Couple hours. Five-minute delay out of two to two and a half hours, that doesn't seem like that big of a deal to me.
Right.
Five-minute delay out of a 30-minute trip, that seems like a much more significant deal. So what's the context of the delay?
I think there's discussion of the delay by both of the partners. In the case of Caltrain, what they will tell you is ever since they started the baby bullet system, their express system, their revenues have gone up and their ridership has gone up. And so it's their belief that electrification of Caltrain could save the whole system, so to speak. It would be a driver to make it even more closer to a break-even proposition. In the case of High Speed Rail, what they're looking at is both the end-to-end times, you know, from San Francisco to LA and ultimately to San Diego and to Sacramento, and they're also looking at it as it relates to the original ballot argument from Prop 1A in 2008 in terms of meeting some of the promises, if you will, that were made to the voters. And so they're looking to shave time that way. So you're right, and delay is an issue or is something both groups are looking at, but they're looking at it maybe through different prisms is how I would describe it.
Okay. But you see my point about, particularly on the High Speed Rail thing?
Yes.
Relatively short delay, I mean.
Correct. And I guess, Council, what I would say is in some respects, perhaps those kind of delays or efficiencies are almost more of a benefit or focus of Caltrain, I would say, at this point, than say, High Speed Rail.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Grisilli?
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions either, Mr. Collins. Are you ready to go?
The one question, I think the reason I didn't have any comments about this in the beginning is I'm so stumped by this project. And I get the feeling that, are we just going through the motions here? And everything I read in the press is that this thing is about as dead as it can get, that it's, that the cost has run away so far that the public support is rapidly eroding. And I think I read the other day that if they had, if they held the vote today, the High Speed Rail project would fail. So I wonder, are, tell me I'm wrong.
Well, I won't say you're right or you're wrong, Councilmember Collins, but let me say a couple of things. First of all, I think it's important to note that we're really talking about two different projects. We're talking about Caltrain electrification, which is also known as Caltrain modernization for some folks, and we're talking about the statewide High Speed Rail. The two are interrelated in that, number one, the state High Speed Rail project needs the Caltrain right-of-way if they are to get to San Francisco in a cost-effective fashion. However, as I was alluding to from some of the Councilmember Olbert's questions, it could be the case that if High Speed Rail does not move ahead, that Caltrain electrification, using perhaps state or federal money, again, this is hypothetical, that could move ahead without High Speed Rail. So I know, I hear a lot of people talk about the High Speed Rail project and electrification, but in fact, they're two different things that are sort of joined. Part of what's happening right now, in fact, through the blended operations, and we'll get into this a little more in February, is even though the peninsula segment, assuming both projects move ahead, will not occur for a number of years, what Caltrain is trying to do in this process is suggest to High Speed Rail that if they could get consensus on the peninsula, which again, depending on one's point of view of the politics, could be something that's possible or not so possible, that they might advance the money to Caltrain to make that happen so that that was in place, so that if the Central Valley segment was built and then the next one was Merced to San Jose, if the blended solution was standing there, the peninsula service could be earlier than before. Moving to your other question about, you know, is this all a pipe dream? Is the High Speed Rail project going to happen? I think a lot of this depends on who you talk to. If you talk to some of the folks in the Central Valley, particularly some of the cities with 20% to 30% unemployment, they're pretty motivated to see it happen. I recognize that every region, including that one, there's, you know, there's not unanimity, of course. You know, as, I'm sure you and Councilmember Olbert will come to know if you don't already, it's a rare public project, even in San Carlos, where everybody agrees it's a good thing. And the same is true here. But if you talk to some of the folks in the Central Valley, they're very motivated to see this move ahead, and I think that's the reason they were able to lobby the federal government to require that the first segment be done in that area. The real fundamental question, I think, for that segment is going to be, can High Speed Rail and can the supporters in the Central Valley get the state to issue a portion of the bonds this year? If they are, the project could be under construction, that initial segment, in the fall. If not, the project, you know, will not move ahead. And again, depending on who you talk to in this area, some people will tell you the project's still moving, others won't. I can tell you that based on working on this project, High Speed Rail is continuing to not only design the Central Valley segment and get it ready for construction, but they are also still active in both the Merced to San Jose and the Bakersfield to Palmdale segment. So they're still working and funded on three different segments. So they seem to think it's still a live project, but time will tell. But even if that isn't, as I say, Caltrain electrification could move ahead. And one other point, too, I should make, again, to show how these are linked, is that one of the reasons that Caltrain has asked or recommended, and we've been supportive of the notion of all four tracks being at the same grade and being compatible, is it's also possible that if Caltrain, or High Speed Rail were to fund Caltrain's electrification, and then years later, it didn't happen, Caltrain could in fact use all four of those tracks sort of on High Speed Rail's nickel. So not to be too Machiavellian about this, but I think that's yet another part of this all discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I know we're going to have some questions from the public, so we'll get started with that. Thank you, Mr. Mora. First up is Dimitri Vandelos, then we have Sam Hertzberg, and Tim Hilborn, and followed by Marilyn Moon.
Hi. That was an interesting presentation. I don't know, is there any way we could actually call up a couple of those slides?
Sure.
This guy?
Yeah.
How do I go back?
Yeah, just go to slide. There you go.
Cool. And then next, just click the center button, I just want to go next.
Or go to slide.
So I have a page of Quick Notes and an outline that I need to change a little bit, given the presentation. So one point that I'd like to make is on one of the first slides, the San Carlos Approach, the first bullet point, keep the community informed. The last, community involvement that I'm aware of regarding this was when we had a meeting with Peninsula Rail Project Robert Doty, I believe it was about a year and a half ago. I don't know, Mr. Mora, if you have the dates. But I know the letter that was sent was about a year and a half ago, you know, regarding the alternatives and all that. Since then, there's been nothing from the city and the community in terms of information. So I just want to bring this up, that it's beautiful to put it up as a bullet point, it's another thing for it to actually be reality. So that reality of keeping the community informed just hasn't been present, so I just want to call that out. So now, I want to get to my, to the points. So this is, you know, it sounds reasonable. We can talk about the fact that there's a grade separation, all that kind of good stuff. The reality is, is the grade separation only has two tracks, and there's a fundamental, we may need four tracks, which would mean the berm would have to come down, everything has to be rebuilt. So as much as we, the city staff wants to pat itself on the back for saying, hey, we've got the grade separation, it's all good, it's only good if High Speed Rail, if we can get away with only two tracks. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear because we can't say, oh, this is all good, and then all of a sudden say, we may need four tracks. Right? It's a big, the delta is just too huge here. We don't know what we need, so we can't really say that the berm project was even good to begin with. So I just want to make that other point. So the other thing that I'm very, very disappointed to see is that there was no feedback regarding the latest draft of that HSR project. And I sent an email to Mayor Klein last night, and in that HSR project, they were talking about losing one to two lanes of Old County Road through a large chunk of our city, from Old County to, from Quarry to McQ, along Old County, Cherry to Branson, and Britton to Whipple. There will also be lane closures on the overpasses along Britton and Howard Avenue. For some reason, the HSR, EIR omitted Holly Street, but I think that was a clear omission. It wasn't, it's not like Holly Street isn't going to be affected, right? So we're going to have major traffic disruptions for our community and the peninsula in general, given the latest EIR. There's nothing in the staff report. There's nothing in the staff report that reflects that. That's a warning sign for me. Nothing is talked about the staging areas. I mentioned the traffic. The blended rail approach, it is good to see that there was acknowledgement that there is a four-lane option going through San Carlos. We have to keep that under consideration. Four lanes of tracks going through San Carlos means we need that railroad right-of-way. Right? And we need it for, not only, not only for the tracks, but for the staging. Otherwise, we're going to lose Old County, which is what HSR, the HSR EIR is already saying. You're going to lose Old County forever. So I see, what I'm really concerned about is the loss of this major arterial roadway in the city, potential eminent domain of houses and businesses along Old County Road, an absolute construction nightmare, and devastation of the East Side residential neighborhood if, if we need to close Old County. I am curious about the city letter to the Peninsula Rail Project from a year and a half ago. This letter stated that the city prefers that the West Side railroad right-of-way property be used for staging and additional rail construction. And did we ever receive an answer from the PRP? I don't know, because the community hasn't been informed, it's sad to say. So do we know, Mr. Mora, was there?
Mr. Mora, you can answer all, I'm sure you're taking notes, he'll answer all your questions.
Awesome. Okay. I'd like to see, I'd like to see that response, and I'd like to understand what the communication has been for the past year and a half, because the community has not been informed. So I'm going to get to the end here. The things that I think should be done. San Carlos is a unique situation, right? Any of the design alternatives are feasible as long as we retain the right-of-way. So there was, you know, the trench design, the viaduct, widening the berm, I forget what all of them are, all of them were. But we can do it if we use the railroad right-of-way, which is actually on these slides, that that's the whole point, is to use the railroad right-of-way. The city should not approve, this again, from the GESE's perspective, should not approve any development of the railroad right-of-way property until we have a clear accounting of the space needed for the Caltrain electrification project and the HSR project, including the staging areas. So they are two separate projects, and it is horribly confusing. It's a nightmare to try and keep track of these things. And it's also very clear that Caltrain and HSR are not doing an effective job of coordinating, and that's very concerning, because there's talks about using completely different types of railroad systems, all this kind of stuff that could really turn into a nightmare.
Mr. Vandelos, we're going to need you to start wrapping up.
Okay. And I just have a couple more bullet points here. So we need clear answers from HSR and Caltrain about how the projects will be coordinated. And I strongly suggest that these projects be coordinated in a fashion supportive to the community and to both Caltrain and high-speed rail. My last point is, given the issues that we've had regarding RDA funding, the school district lawsuit, could we, I propose we build the transit-oriented development on Mueller Plaza on the city property and not along the railroad right-of-way property. This has far fewer negative ramifications to the city as a whole, and is a potential way to help us out, potentially help us out of the budgetary issues that we're now facing.
All right. Thank you. And next up, we have Sam Hertzberg, followed by Tim Hilborn.
Good evening, City Councilman Mayor. Just comment, feeding off of Dimitri's comments, you know, San Carlos is unique, that that whole west side of the railroad right-of-way is preserved and was originally cleared of a number of auto-based businesses on the west side of the train tracks for high-speed rail, you know, some time ago, over 10 years ago. That was about the time that the railroad, the berm was constructed. And while that improved the ability to get across, you know, the train tracks without stopping all traffic in the city, it did cause some impacts to our community in the East Side. We were not heavily involved in that process, per Mike Garvey, the former city manager. He chose to omit, seeking neighborhood impact on that project. There was a number of berm considerations concerned. He said, we had your best interests at heart. One of the impacts that happened as a result of that berm, however, was the noise impacts carry further in the neighborhood. Then you have the transit-oriented development proposed there, which is, you know, with an already grade separation from the single-family residents to where the base of that is, then to go up 50 feet from there, that has the potential to have impacts. Well, high-speed rail wasn't even discussed in the Transit Village GIR. And the whole issue of staging is a major one. What's being discussed in this draft, partially revised draft program EIR for high-speed rail, as Dimitri had mentioned, was 1.91 impact from Old County Road between Quarry Road to Whipple Avenue, a huge area. And, you know, we have pass-through traffic issues on the south of Holly, getting to the shuttles, going back and forth. Well, how, you know, on the north side of Holly, all those streets, they all go back to Old County Road. So if you shut down Old County Road, how are people going to get into and out of where they live? Are you going to have to punch, acquire properties, punch through on the other side, and then you have pass-through traffic that way? I remember Randy Royce, some of his last comments at our last GESE Neighborhood Meeting was saying, he even thought we should have barriers south of Holly Street to prevent some of that pass-through traffic that was becoming a nuisance. And then the idea of introducing it on the north side when you're trying to deal with it already on the south side. In terms of, you know, the options, you've got, you know, the trench, viaduct, or the viaduct, question if it's going to be electrified like a BART or magnetic, or are you going to need overhead wires? And what are the visual impacts of that? What are the opportunities for open space, a linear park, a dog park? How are these projects going to be organized and timed? I mean, the fact that the Transit Village project on Sam Trans property didn't address high-speed rail, I mean, there's, there's just coordination issues that need to be addressed in terms of our neighborhood and the impacts of these projects, noise, vibration, wind, visual shade impacts. We'd like to see more information. We definitely would welcome a presentation by the city and/or Caltrain High-Speed Rail at one of our neighborhood meetings as soon as, you know, more information is available. I think it would be great to inform those who would live closest to it, you know.
I'm going to need you to wrap up, Tim.
Yep. Appreciate your, your time.
All right. Tim Hilborn, and then Marilyn Moon.
Mayor, City Council, thanks for listening to us tonight. First of all, I'd like to start off just by saying, the 2010 letter sent by Randy Royce really mirrors the letter that is proposed to go out by Mayor Klein. And I'd like to make a few comments about that. One of my first concerns is that both letters really pushed the support for the overhead viaduct in being that it would open up to businesses on the East Side, it would open up visually, those kinds of things. What my question is, is how would that open that up better than a trench option or a tunnel option? So I'm asking that this letter consider all those options, because right now it doesn't, it really just pushes for that one option. I know that the letter also mentions that we want a consistent grade of tracks if we are intending to have the four, four tracks, and I think that's a good point. My other comment that I'd like to kind of voice with Dimitri is the fact that the community output has literally been a joke. We have not heard anything for almost the past two years. I sent several emails to Randy Royce, to the city council, I've gone to several meetings, and my question is, in any of these meetings that I went to, how many of the handful of people actually expressed their support for the overhead viaduct? I did not see that. I heard people talking more about either trenching it or putting it down, you know, into an actual tunnel. So I really want us to support keeping those options open. I hope the city council and mayor will consider that. Also staging areas. If we talk about a blended system, that's just going to turn into a complete nightmare. We will lose Old County Road. If you put the San Carlos Transit Village in before this happens, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, we're, you know, we're not all engineers here, but, you know, we have the common sense to understand that these staging areas are going to need to be there. My other concern was that they mentioned the Royal Platform, the platform being down by a Royal. If the San Carlos Transit Village does go in, one of the appealing things about that Transit Village is people are going to be able to walk to the train station. I'm not sure how far that is, but that's got to be close to a mile. For me personally, I probably wouldn't walk that in the morning, so that's another consideration. My other main concern that I want to address with you guys is, or the city council, excuse me, is to align with other cities on the Peninsula. I'm still not sure, and I've sent countless emails about this, that we really need to align with other cities on the Peninsula, Belmont, Burlingame, there's power numbers, and I would really like to see the city council push that forward. And then my last point is the budget. I do have to agree with Councilmember Collins. I, half of me, three-quarters of me, really feels like this is a moot point. I don't know if it's going to, that any of this is going to move forward. And where are the funds going to come from? I think that's one thing we need to address in the letter, especially with Caltrain. Where are these funds going to come from? The RDA is gone, Supreme Court decision, we may never see that again. So that's something that really needs to be in the letter as well. So again, thanks for listening to our comments, and if you take that into consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Marilyn Moon?
My name's Marilyn Moon. I live at 1861 Howard Avenue. Thank you for listening to me again, a little more relaxed. I don't really know, practically speaking, why we're even talking about this rail system. Nobody can afford it. Obama just asked for a trillion dollars because the federal government can't pay its bills. The governor is cutting all kinds of education and social, can't think of the word, aspects is a good one, because he doesn't have the money to pay for education, pay for poor people, pay for housing. San Carlos is not in that great a shape. We don't have our own police department, fire department. You were talking about what sounded like a very special school. I don't know the dynamics of that, but it sounded like the school had to close, and it was about $90,000. And the rail system sounds like multimillion dollars. I just think the conversation should end. Thank you very much for listening to me.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Mora, if you want to come back up and answer some of those questions, and I'm sure you're going to have follow-up questions from the council.
Okay. Would you like me to run through some of the comments, or would you like to answer some questions? Okay. Couple things. Let me go back for a second to the slide on the alternate track design. And I think I was trying to anticipate the question from Dimitri, and I guess I didn't do a good job of it. The discussion that I had last week with both Caltrain and high-speed rail was to reconfirm our understanding at the staff level that at a future date, the alternate four-track design would be added to the high-speed rail EIR and supplemental documents. And they confirmed that that is the case. And the significance of that is that when that design is substituted for the current design, that in the opinion of the high-speed rail designers, Old County Road is no longer impacted, in their words. So that's a fairly significant piece. In terms of the state high-speed rail process, you know, again, I'm not going to sit here and defend their process or, or how they've done this. And indeed, I think at the staff level, this particular piece has been a little challenging for us in that we have a solution to some of the questions, and yet it hasn't made its way into the official documents because of this suspension, if you will, of the Peninsula segment while the blended segment is studied. You know, obviously, we don't necessarily, in the staff level, agree with how it's been handled, but nevertheless, that's where we are. In terms of public involvement, again, we have, whenever possible, asked for high-speed rail to make presentations in the city. I think it's fair to say that staff's been somewhat frustrated in that the budget for that has been very limited. We've had presentations, the workshop that Dimitri mentioned was one of them, we've had presentations at chamber meetings, at the farmer's market, and things like that. But I don't think it's ever been at the level that if we were king, or we were in charge, that it would be. Obviously, we'd like to see more presentations as well. That's a point that we've made with Caltrain, by the way, recently, in their blended process, or the blended project process. So hopefully, there will be some of that, particularly as it relates to the discussions that occur between February and the fall, related to the potential of the overtake tracks, and also the potential of the various grade separations up and down the Peninsula. In terms of, there were some questions about the different designs. There was a question about magnetic systems. There have, staff's certainly aware of the various Maglev designs for high-speed rail. Our understanding is that is not a technology that the state is entertaining. I can't, not an engineer, I can't explain to you why, but that's not something they're looking at. As far as the different designs in San Carlos, there were several. In addition to the different overhead designs, berm and viaduct, there were also underground designs, such as a partially-covered trench and a deep tunnel. I think it's fair to say that when the staff looked at the underground design for San Carlos, and I think it's important here to point out that unlike many of the cities where they have expressed support of underground alignments without looking at the plans, we did look at the plans for San Carlos. And I think it's fair to say the plans for an underground alignment in San Carlos, as we were shown, were much more disruptive than the overhead designs. In terms of the question about berm or viaduct, I think our position is somewhat interesting in that in the comment letters that we've sent to high-speed rail, San Carlos, and again, this has been past councils, and this council may feel the same or maybe differently, but we've always indicated that San Carlos would entertain a berm for two additional tracks because we've been able to landscape the berm that's in place, and some folks like the berm. However, we are aware of the fact that in the discussions with the other cities, that we seem to be alone among the Peninsula in liking the berm. Although I will tell you that recently, I did have the opportunity, a couple months ago, to host a tour of our grade crossing at Holly Street and along Old County Road for the mayors of Gilroy and Morgan Hill. And interestingly, they kind of liked the berm because of the heavily landscaped approach that San Carlos took. And indeed, in the discussions, my understanding, in that segment of high-speed rail, that's actually actively under consideration. So I think down the road, if we do in fact end up with overtake tracks for San Carlos, several of those options are indeed possible. And indeed, in our discussions with Caltrain, one of the questions that we have had at the staff level is this discussion of, in the study between February to September, whether there's going to be a discussion of all the different designs and all the different options. And I think there's been some discussion among Caltrain staff about doing that, about reopening all of that. So I think that if that's something that the city is interested in, that's certainly going to be an opportunity. But I think to be clear about the alternative design, the reason that we landed on that design with high-speed rail was that was the only approach that the engineers and Caltrain and high-speed rail and city staff could figure out that would allow all of these things to occur within the existing right-of-way. And I guess to make a comment on one of the things we heard, I think one of the speakers said that the Transit Village developer did not address high-speed rail in their environmental document. It's true that in the first draft, they did not. However, after I met with them at Al Seve, they did in fact discuss it and work on it in subsequent documents. And it's also the case that there is a 20-foot strip along the length of the Transit Village that accounts for high-speed rail, and that is actually part of the four-track alternative design. What we were trying to do is use that 20 feet to try to fit all of these things in. So those are some of the highlights. I could continue on, but I think I'll stop there for now. I could continue on, but I think I'll stop there for now.
Okay. Are there follow-up questions from councilmembers? Mr. Collins?
I got a couple. Brian, in what direction does the berm go if it's expanded? Does it go east? Does it go west?
Well, here's the challenge with the berm, and I think one of the reasons frankly that the design engineers had initially talked to us more about the viaduct than the berm. The berm is actually, has some metal straps in it. It's an engineered fill, so you can't really cut into it, and you can't really easily move it. And so their vision initially in San Carlos, and in Belmont too for that matter, was to construct the second set of two tracks, and then to ultimately replace the berm once you had detoured the train onto the other tracks. At least, that's my understanding of it.
So you built an entirely four-track berm?
Well, you'd end up with a four-track viaduct, in their opinion. In other words, what they've said is if San Carlos and the other cities decide to go with the berm, and again, to date, we've been the only ones who've, in this segment of the peninsula, even expressed any interest in a berm, that they would, they would work with us to try to figure it out from an engineering point of view. But I think from the engineering, the engineers' mind, you know, they've said it would be easier and more feasible, from their point of view as designers, to do, to basically replace the berm and have four tracks all at the same grade on viaducts. The other issue in San Carlos, as I understand it, is that because when we did the initial design of both Holly, Ralston Harbor, and also Britton and Howard, we were trying to minimize the height. The tolerances are very tight, and I'm sure for some of you who've been in town, you can probably remember that when we did the grade crossings at Howard and Britton, the tolerances were so tight that when the temporary wood facing was in, their vehicles were getting stuck in there. What we've been told by High Speed Rail and Caltrain is that if four tracks are ultimately constructed in San Carlos, and we don't reuse the two tracks, which again, is another alternative that's being discussed, that you would have to raise the height of the future either berm or viaduct by either five or 10 feet, and that would depend upon whether you were interested in connecting the streets at grade or not. And one of the discussions that we had at the workshop that was discussed earlier was we showed residents pictures of different scenarios, some of which included this notion of raising the tracks. And I think there was a lot of, again, you know, different, different take perhaps on that session, but when we took, looked at the minutes, there were a number of speakers from the San Carlos public that had a lot of questions about not only the viaduct concept, but also could you develop underneath it? In other words, could you have businesses? Could you rent it? Could you use, have skateboard parks or whatever? So there have been a lot of commentary, and that was one of the reasons that the May 2010 letter that we sent out from Randy Royce had a lot of commentary about the viaducts, because that was comment we got from the public.
Okay. And then, I just, just one other. You talked about, one of the speakers talked about the possibility of, one of the options, eliminating Old County Road forever?
No.
Did I misinterpret that?
Well, the issue, here's the issue, and again, this is part of the frustration I think we have at the staff level, frankly, in working with the state High Speed Rail. If you use the underground alternative, there's an impact on Old County Road and people's property, absolutely. If you look at some of the overhead alternatives, not all, but some of them, there is some impact on Old County Road. Part of our process at the staff level, in meeting with the state monthly, and coming up with the alternative design, was to avoid impacting Old County Road. And we believe, and again, in my discussions as recently as this afternoon, with the High Speed Rail engineering team, it is their belief that if you use the alternate design that we came up with, that you do in fact avoid impacting Old County Road. You don't close it, you don't lose lanes, and all of that. But we're kind of in a governmental catch-22, as it were, because by the time that design was finalized, the High Speed Rail activity on the peninsula segment had been suspended. And so they have no funding, according to them, to put this design in their official documents, which is why they continue to issue documents based on the other designs which do impact Old County Road. So it's kind of, you know, it's one of those things where we all know that someday, if this project moves ahead, either through the Caltrain electrification or through High Speed Rail, that this design will be put in the project, at which point, the Old County Road impacts go away. But we're kind of stuck at the moment, because it's not funded. So it's not necessarily logical, but that's where we are.
Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein. Brian, I just had one quick question, which was triggered only by the very last of your comments prior to answering Ron's question.
Yes.
Other than that, I was, I was fine. How in the world do you fit two extra tracks in a 20-foot additional segment of right-of-way? And I know you're not a railroad engineer either, but just, that, that just struck me as, I don't even, I can't even visualize how that would happen.
Well, essentially, and again, I won't attempt to explain the plans, and I have them in front of me, and I'm not an engineer either, but when we looked at the designs, and we looked at what was possible, it was clear that if you move the platform, which is a key part of this, towards Arroyo, that opens up some land, and that coupled with the 20 feet, in other words, it's additive, then you have enough to, again, from the engineers' point of view, not from mine, because that's not what I do for a living, but, that it is in fact possible, and the way they would do it, or propose to do it, is to add the two tracks, take out the berm, put in the, you know.
I see. So, and that 20-foot strip was just in the Transit Village?
That's correct.
And so, okay, so that says nothing about what additional width would be required further south, for example. But it does, I think you just told me a key thing, is that it does, for that 20-foot to apply, you do have to move the station.
Yes, and the other reason you have to move the platform is because the depot is a historic building. It's not just on the state register, it's on the national register. And so early in the process, there was a lot of discussion, and frankly, we had this discussion when we did the Holly-Ralston Harbor project. There was early discussion about moving the station forward, assuming you could. It's an unreinforced masonry building, is part of the problem. But if you could, it would be more prominent, quote-unquote, on El Camino. And we went through the environmental process on the previous project, everybody said, it's a landline, you'll never get the environmental clearances. So early in the process, on High Speed Rail and Caltrain electrification, when both of those teams came forward and looked at it, they had the same reaction. And when we talked to them and said, we've been to that party, and, you know, it's just not practical. So what happens is you're sort of hemmed in, in terms of, the station is a fixed location, the platform is a fixed location, and you have the 20-foot strip. And so as we played with the different variables, or I guess I should say more appropriately, the engineers played with the variables, they basically came up with this concept in meeting with myself and with, with Al Seve, and the former Public Works Director, the three of us, that if you shifted the platform to the south, that opened up some space, that when you added it to the 20 feet, and, and, you know, moved some things around, you could, you know, magically do all of these things.
At the price of extending the walk between the Transit Village and?
Correct. Correct. And, and, and just to finish that thought, that obviously has, has had some influence on, as we've been working on the Transit Village, and in the discussions with that developer, because obviously, if the platform moves, that has some considerations as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Griselli?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Moore, would it be accurate to say the reason the community output has been non-existent is because we haven't been getting output from High Speed Rail?
I think that's very fair. I mean, there, there is that, and also the fact that High Speed Rail is sort of on hiatus ever since the blended system proposal moved ahead. Basically, what High Speed Rail said at that point was, all right, we'll continue to focus on the Central Valley and on the other two segments, and we'll leave Caltrain in the lead on blended system. And I think the way to look at this from the, the question of public participation and more discussion, is it's Caltrain's intent, from my understanding, to have all of those things occur, starting in February, moving forward. And certainly, we'll continue to press on that.
Yeah, and I just want to bring up one point. I received a phone call from Terry Lightfoot on the voicemail, and he brought up some of the facts that you're saying, that, you know, we have mitigations, it's not going to affect Old County Road, but we just don't have the funding to release that part, and...
Right. In fact, in fact, it's my understanding, just, just to close the loop on that, I understand there was even a resident from the city of Palo Alto that testified in front of Congress that Old County Road in San Carlos would be impacted. And when that occurred, I called them up, Terry and others, and said, you know, there is this alternate design, that if you had a couple bucks, you could put in your plan, and everybody would understand that's no longer the case. And they were kind of, yeah, we know, we know.
Okay, and then the last question is, would it be accurate to say that, I mean, even if you're in favor or not in favor of High Speed Rail, this is an important process to go through based on the fact in case High Speed Rail comes in?
Thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out. That was a point I was planning to raise. I think the philosophy all along, among the staff, and I think the council as well, is this city has never really taken a position for or against High Speed Rail, but we have very much emphasized the need to be part of the process and to make comments. And, and one of the comments I made to the folks in Morgan Hill and Gilroy, when they were comparing our grade crossing and how beautifully landscaped it was, and the stone and everything else we had added, and they compared it to certain other cities, I won't name, and how they ended up with gray concrete structures, and they said, how did you do that? And I said, the difference is, from day one, we focused on the process, we focused on the design, it was important to the staff, it was important to the council. And I think the point, Mayor, that you made is, is a very salient and important one, in this process as well. It could be the case that High Speed Rail does not move ahead in the future. It could even be the case that electrification doesn't either. But if we don't participate in that process, and we don't get the council's and the community's comments, and put all of the goodies and things we want in the suggestion and in the letters, we're not going to get them. I think there's a reason that we have such a highly enhanced grade crossing, or grade crossings in San Carlos, and I think it's interesting that other parts of the High Speed Rail project are now touring San Carlos to, as one person said to me from another city, see how it's done right. And I think that we should, my recommendation is we should continue in that vein.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moore. We'll now move to discussion. Would anyone like to start? Mr. Olbert?
Couple of things. Actually, first, I just wanted to ask a quick question. A couple of folks have alluded to an email from the Greater East Side Homeowners Association?
Yes.
I hadn't seen it, I just wanted to...
It was, it was made out to myself, and I forwarded it on to city staff.
Ah, okay, and city staff will be forwarding it on to the rest of us at some point? Okay, if you can't for some reason, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that's where it was. So now we're at the stage where we're actually going to talk about feedback on the letter, right? Okay. Well, I'm probably in the minority up here, but I guess my feedback on the letter is, is relatively simple, because I would, I would like to see it focus much more than I believe it currently does, on what I'll call, living within the current means, if you will, using the existing track layout. I don't care whether the steel needs to be replaced for, for various reasons, but not to look at additional tracks being run through San Carlos, not to look at other kinds of major significant changes to be done either. And then, what I would also do, or, or ask, is that, whether that gets incorporated or not, why couldn't we include a number of, references to a number of the issues that have been brought up in the discussion and in public comment about talking about some of the issues with EIRs, talking about the complexities that are being caused by not having a more active presentation and interaction between the High Speed Rail Authority and Caltrain and our community members? And, and basically, you know, I don't want to make it look like a list, litany of complaints, but in a constructive way, say, these are important issues that need to be resolved, and, and at some point, are going to need to be addressed, and the sooner we get them addressed, the better.
Okay. Councilmember Griselli?
This is, you know, this issue, as, as Mr. Moore said, it could go forward, it could not go forward. Even though I've only been here six years, it's four years longer than anybody else has been, and we've been talking about this thing, and I know when I was mayor, someone came up to me and said, well, we're going to form this group. And it wasn't very hard to figure out that this group, and I'm not saying it's the same group that's involved now, already had made up their mind about this, this issue. And I felt at that time, as Mr. Moore said, I'm not saying we shouldn't take a stand, but at that point, there was even less information about what was going to be happening about this, and we didn't, we didn't take a pro or con stand on it. I think this is just part of the, I mean, we're going to talk about this in February, I understand, Mr. Mayor, in a much more detailed way. We can punch out letters every week if we want, relative to all the different points. I believe this letter is just relative, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moore, relative to certain specific items that are, that are being discussed, not necessarily the grand project or the, the whole thing.
Right.
And that's why I think it should be less rather than more, and that's why I believe it's, it's done in a fairly good way. There's many, 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 many more comments that could be made, positively and negatively, perhaps more negatively than positively, relative to this project. But I think what we're trying to do here is work within the process. And, and this process asks for comments about certain items, and that's what we're, we're doing. So I believe this is what we should try to do. As I said, less in this case is more. And next month, we're going to be discussing this in, in more detail. That might, you know, set up another letter that we would send out in a positive or negative way. But I believe what we're trying to do tonight, this speaks to what we are trying to accomplish this letter.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of, you know, moving the process along with, with this letter, but at some point, I really want to see a discussion and maybe change the, and maybe we can't do it alone as a city, but I really like to see the discussion changed so that the electrification of Caltrain and the upgrading of what really is sort of a second-class commuter rail system, really gets paid more attention. We really need a first-class commuter rail system. I, I love the concept of High Speed Rail, the concept, but the problem is, is that with the physical, with the geography that we have on the peninsula, I'm a realist. I just, I'm, I'm having a very difficult time seeing how it ever gets built. So I'm happy to move the process along, but I, I, at some point, I really want to see us try to work with, as, as I think it was Mr. Hilborn said, work with the other cities on the peninsula, and really get behind a sort of a unified approach to make Caltrain a first-class commuter rail system that is electrified, that runs at, you know, seven or eight trains an hour, what it, whatever it is, more like Bart, but without the noise, at least inside the cars. But that's where I'd like to see it go long-term, but I'm, I'm happy to, to do whatever we need to do now to get to the next step. I'm not sure the next steps are ever going to happen.
Okay, and I'm definitely going to agree with Mr. Collins and Mr. Griselli. You know, we, we haven't taken a stance as a city, and maybe that'll possibly change in February. I don't know how this council's going to go. I have enjoyed the fact that we haven't really taken a stance. There are groups out there we can join, there are a lot of our neighbors who have taken a very proactive stance against High Speed Rail. They have flat-out said, no way, no how. And that's the groups that were, that you're talking about. And if, if it's the pleasure of this council for us to join one of those groups, we'll talk about that in February. But I think this does the job for what's needed right now, and I believe we have a very limited scope that we were asked to comment on, we should comment on that. But if we do want to send another letter, we were going to have a very long discussion, I imagine, in February, about where this community sits in regards to High Speed Rail. So I'm okay with this letter as it is, on the understanding that in about a month, we are going to have a very, very deep discussion about where, whether, what we want to do going forward with the actual High Speed Rail, if we can even ever figure out what they're actually even talking about. So I will entertain a motion if there is one to be made.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, we discussed, we review, and then basically authorize you to send the, send the council-approved version of the draft San Carlos Comment Letter, which is attached in Attachment Number Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Item 11E, consideration of resolutions affirming that the city will serve as a successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, affirming that city housing authority will serve as a successor housing agency, and appointing two members to an oversight board. Mr. Sewicki, can you give me just a rough, as, I know this is going to be a long report, but we're getting to a later hour, do you know how much time you're going to need?
Ten minutes?
Oh, that's nice, never mind then.
Depending on how quickly I can...
But would someone like to make a motion? I imagine we're going to be here till at least 10:30.
We go to 10:30.
Oh, sorry, never mind.
I have a new...
It was a long break.
How long is that going to take?
I don't know. Did you ask me at 10:30?
Sorry, Mr. Sewicki.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the Council, Mark Sewicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. The following report and recommended actions are the result of state legislation and the recent Supreme Court decision to dissolve the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. As you may recall, last year, the governor signed two bills into law, one to dissolve RDAs, and one that would allow them to continue if substantial payments were made to the state. They are known as AB 26 and 27, respectively. The California Redevelopment Association and League of Cities filed a lawsuit contending that the two bills together were an attempt to take local funds... that the two bills together were an attempt to take local funds and therefore a clear violation of Prop 22 passed in the year 2010. The California Supreme Court, however, rendered its decision, which was a split verdict, upholding 26 while striking down 27, which was the worst outcome for RDAs. They will now be dissolved in accordance with AB 26. However, there's been a four-month extension of the deadlines in the original legislation. Going forward, only existing obligations to outside parties can be paid. In particular, the RDA bonds and other debt will continue to be paid out of tax increment by a successor agency. All other activities have ceased and any agreements with the city have been invalidated. The Wheeler Plaza project cannot proceed. CIP projects will have no ongoing source of funding, at least those that were funded by RDA. There's no RDA funds that can be used for economic development, marketing, events, et cetera, and there's no longer a general fund overhead reimbursement. All of the RDA's funds and properties will be liquidated by the successor agency under the direction of an oversight board, which does not have majority local control. The city will only get about 11% of the liquidated proceeds. That's its tax share. The rest will go to the county, school districts, and other taxing entities. In terms of cash flow, dissolution means a net loss of roughly $1.8 million in annual funding, based on the latest calculations. This is funding that would otherwise be available for projects, housing activities, and general fund administration. The general fund alone excluding housing will experience an annual net loss of $800,000 to $1.4 million, depending on a variety of factors, some of which continue to move as we explore the issues further. This includes obligations, what obligations will continue to get funded out of tax increment, how much the county may charge for admin costs is an unknown, what programs the city wishes to continue in some form or fashion with general fund sources or other fund sources impacts what this really means to us. Following is a breakdown of potential general fund impacts if the general fund absorbs what otherwise was paid for by the RDA. This assumes there are no changes in the operating programs currently being funded. As part of both the mid-year budget review and adjustment process and the next two-year budget cycle, staff will be bringing forward for your consideration program decisions based on available funding and what can be preserved and what needs to be discontinued. We will also be forced to give up $11 million of fund balances and about $5 million of property. These would be the two parcels recently purchased adjacent to the Wheeler Plaza redevelopment site. The general fund will receive its fractional share of the liquidated proceeds as a one-time receipt of unrestricted property tax revenue. Again, that 11% share could range anywhere from $1 million to $1.7 million, again, depending on factors, including the value that could be received for those properties when sold, as well as resolution of the school district litigation and appeal. We don't know what that impact is going to be and where that comes out, if it needs to come out, from the fund balances. RDA balances were the funding source for ongoing capital and economic development projects. These are the capital projects that had partial or full long-term RDA funding in the five-year capital budget. These would either need to find other funding sources or would need to be discontinued or deferred. Other long-term economic development projects and activities are also covered by bond funds and other RDA balances. The most prominent is the Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project. The RDA would need to liquidate the two properties adjacent to the parking plaza, that's the furniture store and the Foodville site, and we would no longer be able to invest the amounts necessary to fund the parking garage development from RDA funds. Staff is evaluating the benefit cost of the project to the city if tax increment revenue is not included. We'll also be working with the developer to determine if the project can feasibly be undertaken without RDA assistance. It's not clear at this time what the procedure or timing would be for either liquidating the properties or having the oversight board evaluate any other strategies that could maximize value of what we already have in hand and the long-term value to the community. Branding and marketing and business attraction and retention programs would need to find another source of funding. The facade program was approved over a year ago, but we never announced it or funded it because we had already heard that RDA may be going away. If the city chooses, housing fund properties can be retained, although the housing fund balances are to be redistributed. There are three properties that were purchased with housing fund balances. Two of those are integral to the Wheeler redevelopment if that were to go forward, so strategically, it's worth holding on to those properties to retain control. The successor housing agency would continue to follow the RDA law particular to the housing programs, and these properties under the RDA law actually need to be either redeveloped or sold within six months to a year anyway. So we wouldn't be holding those properties long-term, but it would give us some short-term control. The city will also lose a source of funding for other production, preservation, rehabilitation of affordable housing. Some of this may be able to be covered by the city's BMR-in-Lu Fund and Affordable Housing Impact Fee Resolution. There's also still hope that the state will adopt new legislation to support local housing efforts. In terms of next steps at this point, the city will become the successor agency unless it elects not to before January 13th. Doing so lets the city retain some control over the dissolution. The city is also entitled to receive $250,000 for admin costs. The city can elect to become the successor housing agency, as I discussed. The RDA will need to amend its enforceable obligation payment schedule. This is something that was actually adopted a while back. This is what says what the successor agency can continue to pay, both in the short term and over six-month periods. We need to bring that back to you at the next meeting, in particular, to add the school district litigation, appeal, and potential settlement or payout. Lastly, we continue to monitor new legislation. In Sacramento, there's at least two things that are percolating. One is a bill to postpone the dissolution from February 1st to April 15th, to give the legislators more time to perhaps come up with an alternative program. There's also a bill to allow the housing funds to be moved to the successor housing agency rather than dispersed to all the other taxing entities. Both of those would require a two-thirds vote to pass. There's also another litigation that was filed in Superior Court, making different claims than what the CRA and league litigation was about, and that might be heard before February 1st as well. Shown here are the three actions recommended by staff for your consideration. The first two, again, are recommended in order to maintain some local control over the process and the properties. And the third recommendation is for the mayor to appoint himself and the city manager to this oversight board as the local representatives, if that is the mayor's will, and then, of course, for council to affirm that. I'm available for questions, as well as Frank Spevisek from Rosenhaus Spevisek Group.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sewicki. We'll go with council questions. Does anyone have any? Mr. Grisilli?
Mr. Sewicki, I'm sorry. On this oversight board, I forgot to ask this to Mr. Malpe today, I'm sorry. I can understand we would have two members here. Is this a county board or a city board?
The oversight board will consist of seven members, two from the city, two from the county, one from-
I have that here. My question is, does each city have an oversight board, or is there only one oversight board?
For every redevelopment agency, there would be an oversight board for their successor agency.
Okay, so let me just give you a hypothetical here. So we set up, we put our city manager and our mayor, the county board of supervisors appoints two people who live in San Carlos? Not necessarily. Could be anybody. Then one superintendent of education, anybody in the county. Okay, now we move down to Redwood City. Two people, let's say they put their mayor and their city manager. Same five people on their oversight board, different people?
The county can choose whoever they want as their representatives on that oversight board.
Okay, so theoretically, you could have 20 oversight boards with two people from each city for sure are different and the other people all the same. Is that correct?
Interlocking directors.
I'm just asking. How's this going to work?
Theoretically, that's possible.
But they're probably not going to do, has anybody ever explained how this is going to work?
I don't think anybody's ever seen anything like this or really knows yet as to how these oversight boards would work.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to, this is not, I'm not trying to sharpshoot. I'm just asking. So it's an ongoing process. So in theory, I could be sitting in Daly City, appointed by the board of supervisors, to sit on the oversight board.
Yep.
In theory.
In theory.
It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense, but-
In theory, you could be also sitting on the San Carlos board.
That's right. I could be on both, huh?
You got free time.
Yeah, I got free time. Anyway, I'm just trying to understand, because I'm trying to understand who's going to be deciding our local issue. Is it going to be folks that live in this city? And it sounds like we only got two people that really specifically, and the other five people could be living anywhere in this county. In fact, I'm not even sure that they'd be living in this county. They don't necessarily, it doesn't even speak to that, at least not the way it's written in the staff report. Okay, so, okay, never mind. I'm just trying to understand something that nobody has the answer for.
The theme of the night. Mr. Olbert?
Yeah. You don't like interlocking directors? It's the early 20th century. No, it's a good question. Two questions, just quick ones. One is, if we elect to become the successor agency for housing, can we, do you know if at a later date, we could look to spin that out to some county umbrella organization or?
The legislation is silent on that point.
Okay.
Presumably, yes. If we no longer want to be the housing agency, we could do that. Again, the only real effect of becoming the successor housing agency is that we get to receive those three properties and control the fate of those three properties in the short term. A lot of the other housing obligations are really the result of our BMR ordinance, which is not an RDA activity anyway, so.
And we'd have to continue to administer, I'm not proposing actually we do that, and I certainly understand the value of retaining the control. It's just that at some point, we may find that the control, for whatever reason, doesn't have value.
Right.
Or doesn't have much value. The other question I had is, I thought it was very interesting, you were talking about the, some of the proposed legislation and whatnot. Any additional insights, scuttlebutt, pot odds? I'm not going to hold you accountable for whatever you say. I'm just curious, because it could have an effect on how things roll out. Are they long shots or?
The RDAs are not in a very good bargaining position at the moment.
Yeah. I mean, getting a two-thirds supermajority to agree on anything up in Sacramento is hard. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Collins? Just a couple of questions. Does the city have any priorities for the paltry money we're going to have left over? I see $480,000 on this. Is that a fair number? I mean, I see we have a whole list of capital projects-
Yes, and it may be less.
...development. Pardon me?
And it may be less.
It may be even less.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know. I guess it's not enough to even prioritize anything at this point.
I think the way staff wanted to handle that was through the mid-year budget process to look at what other funds are available, and I think the city manager should speak to that.
Yeah, I think as part of the budget process, particularly in the capital budget process, we've got a long list of projects that have already been identified that don't currently have funding. So to the extent that we received one-time money, typically, it's been the policy of the city council to either invest that money into one of the various reserves, maybe in this case, a strategic property acquisition reserve, if the money was coming from other property the RDA had owned that was sold, or one of the other reserves, or being invested into the general fund capital budget, that the city council would have the opportunity to prioritize how those funds are spent.
And this would be annual money that would be coming back?
Well, there's both types. There's one-time money that would come back from the sale of property and the liquidation of assets that only occurs once, and then there's some ongoing revenue. And you'll have the opportunity in the upcoming budget process to determine how that money is allocated. Certainly, the loss of the RDA generates a gap in our budget, so some money will need to flow back for some general fund administrative and overhead expenses. But to the extent the council has an interest in funding economic development programs or housing-related programs, there's going to be opportunity to divide that up and look at all the city expenditures in a broad sense, as if they're really, all going to be general fund expenditures side by side.
And my only other question is, is there any sense that the RDA could come back in some different form in a year or two, or have you heard anything from people in the know?
I try to never predict what our state legislature will do.
I wonder why.
I don't personally expect to see RDA back. I do expect to see some amendments to the current state of the housing situation, given how housing, I think, ranks in the majority party as an interest. So I wouldn't be surprised to see some reforms that benefit the housing agency moving forward, but I would be surprised. The Supreme Court made it very difficult, I think, to envision a scenario where you're going to see this sort of tax increment financing in any program in the future. You know, I wouldn't put it past our state legislature because obviously, there's some very creative thinkers up there who manage to work around the Constitution all the time. But in this instance, I think the Supreme Court's ruling is going to really make it difficult.
Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli?
Mr. Sewicki, if I understand you correctly, you would like to transfer the three housing properties that we have to a housing authority. But then, you indicated that within six months, we have to liquidate those?
These properties have been, they were purchased approximately 10 years ago.
That's right. There's a 10-year statute we have to get rid of. Now, are those going to be sold at market rate?
We would assess what's, the two properties that are adjacent to Wheeler, I think we would like to figure out what, if anything, could be done with the Wheeler Plaza project. Maybe they continue to be contributed to a project and we get affordable housing back in return. The property at 817 Walnut, we've already, we had already begun the process of evaluating what's the best disposition of that property, either as affordable housing for someone else to own and manage, or sell it as a market-rate development.
So the choice is not going to be monetary, because obviously, as a market rate, it's going to command more money, isn't it?
Correct, but there may be some relocation issues for the tenants who live there.
Right. So it's not necessarily discernible that the markets up here and the nonprofit would be here. It's probably a lot closer than I'm thinking.
It's probably a lot closer because we've been operating it as affordable housing, so the folks who are there are of lower income and pay-
And they have rights that would compress those too.
Right.
Okay. I just, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Actually, all my questions were asked. The only, this is just a random question, Mr. Sewicki. Why was San Jose chosen as one of the plaintiffs? I mean, they've been held up as one of the major abusers of redevelopment. Why would we choose to have them as our standard bearer?
Because they had so much to lose that they chose to be part of the lawsuit.
Okay. Just wondering. Okay, so I don't have any questions. We're going to open up for public comment on Item 11E.
Mr. Stafford, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I think there's always inflection points on a societal level, and I think, obviously, tonight indicates one of them. It's an opportunity to refocus and to do something great. We've seen the value of outsourcing in a number of areas, and it's worked well. I think, though, there's areas where we have social responsibility that outsourcing is a detriment. Outsourcing housing and the responsibility therein is one of them. We have capable staff. We've done an excellent job. One of the reasons we have money in redevelopment is because there's been confidence in the way the town gets managed and the way staff interacts. And I urge you to appoint the city as a successor of interest. You know, it's interesting how Member Grisilli said that there's a value with the Kiwanis Building beyond the dollars. Well, there's a huge value right now to retain some control. Mayor Klein, you'd sort of maybe step back and say, "You know, if Omar was here, what would he say?" But one thing he might say is, maybe we should have been home watching the game tonight with someone else. But instead, I think what he would say is that in Silicon Valley, there's more than one way to do things. The folks that were selected are very capable as developers, and they might be the right source. It might be a hybrid of someone that's more of an accomplished builder as opposed to a developer. It might be a combination therein. But the bottom line is, is that we're at an inflection point- point, and there's a short window, and I think this staff is well positioned to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up for discussion. Does anyone want to start? Does anyone have anything to add? Mr. Olbert?
Just make an observation, which, since the RDAs are going to be dissolved in the near future, I made a note to myself that I really want to understand the allocation formula such that on the RDA funding, a vast majority of the money that was coming into the city was actually being spent on overhead and administration, because I just found that kind of curious. But it's not something that I think we need to concern ourselves about in this particular instance going forward, because the RDA won't be around.
Okay, Mr. Grisilli?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Collins?
No other comments.
Okay. The only thing I want to bring up is, this doesn't ever speak about an alternate, Mr. Malpe. Say, you know, I'm at a wedding or something when we're having a board meeting. Do I have the right just to choose an alternate?
That's an excellent question. I'm not sure what the, or if the law contemplates an alternate. I haven't heard that mentioned.
The law doesn't contemplate a lot, apparently, but I would imagine they would think that some of us, you know, occasionally have other things.
Well, the law, as I understand it, just entitles the city to appoint two members to the board. I suppose we could add to the resolution the ability of the mayor to appoint an alternate, and then we could reserve the issue of whether that's allowed under the law to future date. I don't see any harm in adding that as a feature, that it's possible for the mayor to appoint an alternate in his absence or in the city manager's absence.
And I don't intend on missing any meetings, but we know crazy stuff happens, so I would like to have just a backup where we don't have to come back as a council, and we have to vote in someone new. So if we could put that in the resolution, I'd ask if Mr. Grisilli was willing to serve as my alternate, since you've been up here so long with the RDA.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's a yes from him. So if we can get that in the motion, that would be great. So let's start doing the motions.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would actually expand on that and identify the assistant city manager as my alternate.
Okay. Sounds great.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, Resolution Number?
It's two, excuse me, it's three, four, and five. 2012, three, four, and five.
2012, Number Three, first. A resolution of the City of San Carlos affirming the city will serve as the successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, Resolution Number 2012-4.
Yep.
A resolution of the City of San Carlos affirming the city housing authority will serve as the successor housing agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, Resolution Number 2012-5, resolution of the City of San Carlos affirming the appointment of the mayor and city manager as members of the oversight board for dissolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, and adding that the alternate for the mayor would be myself, Councilmember Grisilli, and the alternate for the city manager would be the assistant city manager, Brian Moore.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, and that item is finished. We will be moving on to Item 11F, consideration of amendment to the employment agreement with Jeff Malpe, city manager.
Well, there's a brief staff report that's in the packet. The council, at the meeting on December 12th, appointed me as labor negotiator to discuss the terms of an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. That discussion resulted in two recommended changes that are before you tonight. One is to change the severance package in the event the council decides to terminate the city manager without cause from three months to six months, and the other is to tie the city manager's adjustment and compensation to that negotiated with certain labor groups, and that any increase that might occur could be, or would be retroactive to the anniversary date of the appointment of Mr. Malpe as the permanent city manager.
And just to clarify, there's also, if there's any decrease as well, right? Mr. Rubens?
Well, you can't decrease the salary retroactively, but the negotiated amount could be decreased. So that would have to be prospective, in other words.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the city council?
Just a comment. I just wanted to, I mentioned this to Jeff ahead of time, and I think I mentioned it to Andy as well. I am going to be abstaining from the vote solely because I was not here during the period of time in which you're being reviewed, but I just want to say that that is no reflection at all of my experience since I've joined the council and working with you, which has been quite pleasurable and very enlightening.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment for Item 11F? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to, the alternatives that the receiver presented, to, I'm not sure, amend, I beg your pardon, there's a resolution for this. I apologize. See, I missed the resolution. Excuse me. Resolution Number 2012-dash?
Six.
Almost 10:30. I guess that's the problem. Six. Resolution of the city council, the City of San Carlos approving amendment of the employment agreement with Jeff Malpe, city manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Abstain.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, we are done for tonight. Everyone, have a good evening. This meeting's adjourned.